Okay, so it is now six thirty-three and I call this workshop to order. It's June twentieth and I'll call, um, roll call. Mayor Protem Dill of here. Councilmember Bunker is absent unless she's on Zoom. Can you tell who's on?
She is Zoom.
She is on Zoom.
She is Zoom, okay. Um, councilmember Styler, is he on Zoom?
I'm trying to check, my computer's not responding.
Not from what I can tell.
Councilmember McLeod.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton.
Here.
And Mayor Blazier. Okay, if you could stand to say the pledge of allegiance, please. Oh, I moved the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. And if you would remain standing, I will send you an implication. Dear heavenly father, Lord God, we are just so grateful to be here in Martindale, Texas. And Lord God, we do ask for your help and your guidance in these decisions tonight that we're making about the parks. And we just want to make this town enjoyable for each and every person who comes here. And we just ask for your guidance in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Y'all wait, name also, would that be in some Jewish?
Oh. Yes, that's fine with me.
Just assuming everybody is.
Okay, so tonight, um, uh, it is a workshop, so everybody will get a chance to talk about. And what we did put on the, for discussion is it shows on the back on park violations.
Wait, excuse me, we have one public comment, I think. Yes.
Well, I just, I'm.
You're starting, okay, sorry, excuse me.
Um, so we have these things that are on the agenda. So if you have something that's not on the agenda, you know, we'll, we'll let you speak on that. Otherwise, if you wanted to hold your comments to talk about these things that are on the agenda, you will get to talk. So if you have a public comment?
About the immigration?
I think so, yes. James Sterling Finley.
Yeah, I, uh, you know, I, so y'all.
Did you want this back?
I don't need that, no, that's just, it goes on and on about the park violation. Actually, that goes on, and I, so I only have three minutes and I only prepared a tiny little blurb. But, um, yeah, I live right across from the park. Uh, I am there every day and every night. And it has become an unacceptable nuisance. We got a three-month-old now, she just turned three months this past Friday. And she's amazing and I could go on about her three minutes, but I won't. Um, uh, it's, it's, uh, and then I was just looking through, this is really great. Uh, the park rules for Allen Bates River Park, they're all super acceptable. Uh, I know the, uh, the Martindale itself, sound ordinance is fifty yards. Is that, is that right? Does anybody know?
I'd have to look.
The city sound, I looked it up about a month ago because of the sound I was hearing in my house from across the river, which is way more than fifty yards. And, and so if there's something that could also be done about the disruptive noise, oh, there you go, unreasonable noise. I'm just repeating stuff that y'all are already going to talk about. And I really appreciate all that. Uh, the one thing that I wrote down in the car before, I just wrote it on my phone again, is, you know, we, we are so blessed, we are so lucky that, that we get to be the stewards of this, this beautiful place, you know, and we get to bring in other people. Uh, and there are plenty of party places on the river and, and this is a uniquely a family park. Uh, people want to bring their grandmothers and their grandchildren. Uh, we should approach this with, with welcome to our visitors and help them understand that Martindale's spirit has been, has been drawing people here for hundreds of years, celebrate the sacred river, you know, just named the cleanest river in America, in fact. We are trying to keep this park place that's open to public with everyone's cooperation, respect for all around, uh, and, and welcome guests for years to come. That's the silly thing I just wrote in the part, but that's, that's all I'm trying to say. That's not, not already, y'all cover so much right here and I'm really happy to see all this. I've, it's been, and I don't like to bother people. I, I've called the Martindale police a handful of times recently, um, during the day and maybe it was on the weekend, but when you press three to report something, it disconnects you. I don't know if you're aware of that. Uh, I've been disconnected six times. And then the seventh time, I pressed a different number to act like I was going to pay a ticket. But I don't have any tickets here, but I, you know, then I was able to leave a message. I don't know if anyone got that, but it was impossible for me to leave a message about what was going on across the river multiple times because. And then something's going on with Culbode County Sheriff's Department's phone. So, but that's not y'all's business. They have a temporary number, I finally got that the other day. But I've never, ever wanted to get anybody in trouble or cause any trouble myself. Just here, this is a beautiful sanctuary place out, out here in the country. It's always meant to be, I've grown up here forty-one years and lived across the river right there on that same property. I'm the luckiest man in Texas. And, uh, I, uh, I hope that we can make this all work out very well.
Kim, could we discuss this at the workshop?
Um, yes.
I'd like, I'd like to ask you some questions.
Yes, sir.
Was there any activity at night?
Yes.
At what time?
Oh, God, oh, middle of the night, all the way till.
Tell, just tell, you know, since you live right across that one, tell us your stories.
Last night, there was somebody with a light stand set up shining it up at my house. Maybe they were fishing, but they were shining it up at my house and then four guys with flashlights. That was at eleven and then they came back at three with the same light stand. That's how I know it was the same people. Um, about six days ago, I was in the shower, I got home from a gig and it was one-thirty in the morning. I had played at Copeland Dance Hall in Copeland, Texas and gotten home. And it, it's one of those places that there's still a lot of smoking, I don't smoke anymore. My wife was like, no, you smell like cigarettes, not around the baby, get in the shower. So I got in the shower and she came into the shower and she said, Sterling, there are people coming across the river right now. And I threw on my robe and there were people with flashlights coming across onto my property. And I ran down there, hold on. And they, uh, oh, we're just getting our fishing lures, we, we accidentally cast too far. The park is closed. I, I assume that the park has the same rules as every other park in Martindale, which means after dark, there's no reason to be at the park.
And that's what we're going to address?
That's all that.
There's no signs in that park that's.
Can I add something to his remark? And one reason I ran for city council is for that reason. Because the last thing we want is a dons fish camp in our beautiful city. And I'll say it on record, that is the main reason I ran at eighteen, because we do not want that to happen to our river. And I can't say that, I shouldn't say that, but I will. Because they devastate people's lives, thank you very much. I do your dad, by the way, good man.
Well, thank you, thank you. Uh, and I do appreciate it, I've seen all these and everything I've heard so far. I'll get out of y'all's way and sit down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Where do you live?
I live directly across from the park. I live at nineteen seventy-nine in the river. My property ends at the river and it goes twenty-six acres out of way.
The phase, the phase one park you're talking about.
That's what we could call a phase one. They also gave us names for that one.
Not page park.
You were talking about the noise.
Yes.
Tell us about.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, so I've got, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm just standing up here.
No, no, this is why we're doing this.
Mr. Finley, you live there.
Yes.
We don't live there, we, we gotta hear this.
Okay, uh, yeah, no, everyone wants to bring their own boombox type of thing and they're competing with each other for sound. And I'm in my house with my three-month-old. When she was two months old, the reason I checked the sound ordinance is because I had to see exactly if they were breaking the law or not by shaking the windows and I couldn't hear the TV in my house, waking up every day. And today, it happened again, I had to go down, I was like, please, we live here. And no one thinks that we live, I'm sorry for raising my voice.
No, go ahead, you have a right. Hey, I'm with you, dude, hey, I'm with you all the way.
So, and it's not the music that I mind, I, I use for a living, I love music, I'm reasonable. And I hope everyone is getting a big kick out of the irony that Sterling Finley is asking for more rules and quieter music. I, I messaged my mom about it when I was writing this earlier and she laughed so much, she called me to laugh, not loud to me. So, anyway, um, yeah, yeah, I, I'm to that point, I'm to the point of coming here and, and, and asking y'all and, and calling the, 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 the police force, you know, because there's nothing else I can do, you know? And I'm not technically in the city limits, we're in the could be whatever.
T-shirt.
Yeah, that's what.
But you're effective.
Yeah.
More effective than probably most people are.
Me and then Andrew that works the water office, you know, he lives right across the way.
Oh, Drew.
Yeah, Drew, yeah. And so we're the only people that are, well, and then Matt Shebel, you know, my neighbor that lives there, when the park first opened up and when COVID first shut down, saying, when the park first opened up, it was fine. It was calm, it was quiet, you know, come there and fish. I, I cannot respect anyone seeing people fly fish early in the morning. You know, there's something about that, it's like, you're, you're trying to outsmart the fish. And my, my great uncle taught me how to do that. Now, it's just gotten ridiculous. And when COVID shut down everything in San Marcos, everyone found out about Martindale, it became a hedonism festival for the first two weeks until y'all came and cleaned it out. And then y'all were there with, I think, a four-wheeler, you know, every day, three times a day, keeping everything in line and that was great. And everything got cleaned for a long time. And Matt would come down and he'd come over to me and be like, well, let's walk across the river and go pick up some bottles, we could go pick up beer bottles and.
Now, wait a minute, so, so they're throwing beer bottles in the river? If you sink it.
Not in the river, on the ground.
Can you do me a huge favor? Take pictures, document, document, document.
I've been trying to catch pictures on my phone, you did mention on my post not too long ago, take pictures and document, uh, but when I'm down there at the river, I usually have my phone because I'm down at the river. And like since Memorial Day, every weekend, I've picked up at least two diapers a weekend on my property, you know, and that's not including beer cans, I'm not even counting the beer cans.
With the Bud Light cans?
Yeah, well, in Bud Light, it's.
Two diapers and Bud Light cans down here on the.
Okay.
Right here on the.
I was like, Jeff, are you leaving diapers and Bud Light cans on my. Anyway. I'm sorry, I'll, uh.
So, one of the things we realized, um, Sam and I went around last Wednesday and he was showing me what was going on. We now have a porta potty in that park.
He said, yeah, I forgot.
Because there was, there was a lot of evidence that one was needed badly. And, um, so that was delivered this morning about eight o'clock and we've got that placed in the park. Um, we also asked a police officer to come to help us understand what he needs for the city council to do in order to enforce the, the rules. So when we were going around, Allen Bates has this sudden rules that is listed, but it's badly needs cleaning.
Yeah.
Um, it's the sun, the one that says no fires, I thought it said fires.
Well.
So we're going to have to get down there and clean that. Um, today, Mike McLeod also included some pictures from, um, San Marcos that shows their park rules and, and they're good. They've outlined or outlawed styrofoam, so we don't need that one on ours. Yeah, I think it would be hard to do that, but, um, so one of the main things we're going to have to do is we're going to have to put signs in the park, um, to tell people what the rules are.
Yes.
I didn't really even realize that the park is only supposed to be open at eight AM and then it's supposed to close at nine PM. And so that's clearly listed at Allen Bates Park, it's pretty high though. And, but we don't want anybody knocking it down. And we'll have to have more than one park. So what I'm thinking is we might want to have a big sign like this that would have all the rules that we want on it, but then we'll have to have some smaller ones. The one that was really disturbing me was the fires. Um, as dry as it is, I mean, we could lose our whole town if a fire got away from someone. The other big concern is the amount of garbage that we're taking out of there. There was twenty-eight bags this morning that Tom Fudge picked up and Sam Clinton's done the same thing. Um, and I am so grateful to Sam and to Jeff for all that they've done for the parks, all the garbage that they're picking up all the time and just the attentiveness that you have towards what the, what the needs are in the parks and everything. And then if I could have our officers speak to, what do we need to do to make it legal for you to enforce?
We need to put the punishments off of the signs.
Put the what?
The punishment.
Oh, put the punishment.
Like, take it all offense.
Uh, I think what it says in the ordinance that several of those things have a five hundred dollar.
Big class misdemeanor, correct.
Um, yeah, you just specify what it is or you have to actually put the dollar amount to make it enforce?
You can just put, this is a punishable. By accident.
So he's had a dollar number on it, that's the only way it makes it enforceable.
Correct, we don't need to put it on every single, you know.
Yeah, yeah, just in general.
Just in general on the bottom, correct.
So the can ban sign, uh, it has the number and up to five hundred dollars.
Correct.
Five, so easy to put up.
Like this sign at Allen Bates, it's got the wrong, it says chapter fifty-eight. That must have been changed, now it's ninety-three.
Could, could you, Tommy, could you talk about a little bit about going down there so far and warning people how you've been going down?
Yeah, so what we're doing, uh, myself and the other officers that are working here, we're going down and just giving warnings. We see people down there with cans or whatever, standing in the river, have the, they put their uh, canopies or whatever in the river and they're sitting there in their chairs, have cans, hey, you gotta get that out of the river, you know, you gotta have a non-disposable container, it's gotta be like a, not to give any brand, but one of those thermos top cups or whatever to have it in, correct. And so that's what we're telling everybody now. I think we're to the point now, and it's grown, I, I will tell you, from a couple of weeks before Memorial Day to now, I agree with you. And, and I'll address some of your, some of your concerns here in a second, but, you know, the other day, there was just cars everywhere, there was just really no place to park. And that's one thing I want to say, it's not manageable. It's not feasible for us to be standing down there the entire time unless we're going to have someone just standing there and that's our whole purpose, is to stand there the entire time. Uh, I think it needs to be managed by somebody. The entrance and exit needs to be managed by somebody and, and watching over it. And who that is, I have no idea, I can make my suggestions, but that's all I can do.
Like a suggestion?
My suggestion is that we're, the city should charge, uh, people that are, uh, that are not residents to go there, I don't know a fee, you, you pick a fee and you charge people that are not residents, that would probably, that would probably stop some of the people from coming here and that would give you guys that are working hard to clean that up, some funds to help clean it up and to replenish stock on trash bags and everything else, maybe trash cans. And then the people that live here, and I think the people, probably the people that live here are probably pretty respectful of our neighbors. And then you can say, hey, you know what, at some point in time, it's cool. I'm sorry, it's cool.
Exactly.
So a quick question, uh, so we need to have somebody down there manning that? Like for the bunny situation?
I believe so. And then, you know, if, if you pick whatever charitable organization here in town, let them go man it for a time and let them keep some.
So, so do you, do you have, do we have to like make them a, like a swearman's an officer or a park ranger?
That's, that's their purpose, saying, this is, this is a city place, this is how you're getting in, you know, uh.
Now, what, one thing I, I want to say though, the citizens need to be, it needs to be free and I think they're guests even, be, even go along that line. If they have a guest, we could talk about that.
I'm talking one, maybe one carload, but.
Yeah, okay, whatever, whatever we, I think it's not the locals, most likely, it's not the locals what you're seeing, it's out of towners.
Pretty much, but we haven't started enforcing, so basically now I'm talking to them. Once I start enforcing and collecting their IDs and, and maybe start that, then I can see who it's going to be.
Okay, because it, because you're aware, there's an article that came out in the, uh, this thing, uh, there was a, it was from, uh, New Braunfels, New Braunfels River floaters were received fines for beer cans. So it looks like the city of New Braunfels is now to the point of giving fines, which I do not want to do, but what do you guys think?
Mike, I am in total disagreement. I believe that we've had this can ban, I think it's been a puff of smoke. I think that there has not been any enforcement of it. I think it looks good on paper, but we have not issued out one ticket. Have there been any written warnings or is it verbal? So we have no tickets, we have no warnings, we have nothing on record that is actually being enforced. Yes, people do want a can ban on there, yes, we do want to educate, but right now, our, our sacred river, which is the lifeblood that will outlast us, we're continually letting it to be violated. I want phase one closed down, I want barricades across it until we figure it out. I don't think that it's right for a, to ask a church group to go down there and police people when there's alcohol involved, when there's, uh, you know, other type of behavior involved. I mean, I've gone over there a couple of times, I've come over here to report my concerns and what I've seen and the glass that's down there and everything. And for us to turn a blind eye to this not being a good steward, it's ridiculous. And I'm appalled.
This is why I'm in the workshop.
Man, if I was mistaken, I don't want them to go police it, I want them to control the entrance and exit, that's it. I don't want them to go down and deal with the, the citizens at all, other than saying, yes, you can come in, you don't have a Martindale, Texas driver's license or you don't have an address that says Martindale, Texas, it'll cost you.
But then that goes to like, you know, yeah, but that, then that goes to like, you know, if they're taking down coolers, what do they have in their cooler? If they're taking down whatever, if they have beer cans, like, I don't think people know, can they be drinking beer on the sides, can they drink beer in the river, can, you know, is beer allowed? Here, beer is not allowed, there, beer is allowed, so there's a lot of confusion.
And that's why we're having this, having this workshop.
Cause you.
And I, and I.
Well, yes, yeah, we're, we're, we're here.
Come on out, come on in.
And like you, and just to, just to finish, you could do it over here at Skull Bridge, but then we have this bridge and then we have phase one and then like it's, like this park has signs, that park is a free-for-all, Skull Bridge is a free-for-all. I think like in all parks, if we're going to have it there or the other, I would say no amplified music.
I agree.
I'd say no boomboxes.
Thank you. That's an amp.
None. Oh, my God, and I'm, I'm so sorry.
No boom, if you want to put it, you put it in your ears, done, no boombox.
Well, I mean, it is, is hard to say what unreasonable noise means.
But unreasonable noise to you and what might be unreasonable noise to me are two different things.
Let's keep it simple, no boomboxes, period. John, finished.
Yes, sir, okay.
So, my name is Joshua Sicardi, I'm a member and pretty active volunteer with a nonprofit, the eyes of the San Marcos River. I first started coming around Martindale in twenty-twenty during COVID because I was using those bridges as swimming holes and as a pool of trash dumping, I was seeing. Y'all are pretty aware of that at this point and the citizens of the city have taken a pretty good job of taking care of it themselves. But I think if this city doesn't want to look like San Marcos or New Braunfels in a few years, y'all need to hit enforcement, enforcement hard. I mean, I see Culbode County sheriffs go out ten deep across the river and stop every single cooler and open it up and look for glass and check IDs and issue IPs and glass. Y'all have a can ban, but I agree, it's a lot of puff of smoke.
Hey, now, wait a minute now, I gotta fit myself on that.
Well, the zero enforcement is.
We, you know, we do, we, we do have another, we have another police force now and I'm not going to say anything.
Right, no, I agree that y'all have gone through.
We, we, we're going through a phase right now and I agree.
I, let's let him.
I'm, I'm sorry, keep going.
But, you know, I think, uh, large-scale enforcement is the only way y'all are going to see any kind of deterrent, because in San Marcos, there is enforcement, but it's still rampant. Um, but anyway, so in Culbode County, they'll go ten deep across the river and stop every single cooler and check it for glass, they'll check IDs for IPs. Y'all have a single-use container ban that y'all can also check coolers for. These, uh, y'all's police chief's talking about stopping people before they come in, obviously that requires employees or volunteers and that's not always available, but they can go and check every single cooler at the park. And if they're absolutely not supposed to, issue a ticket and kick them out. You know, I think y'all need to hit it hard. I do weekly cleanups during summer months of the tubing stretch from Texas State Tubes and Dogs and the amount of trash I see is ridiculous, but it's not that much better past Skull Road, because Skull Road is a free-for-all, it's the wild west. Parties, uh, cookouts, tents, uh, large, twenty-plus groups of people that are definitely not local, you know, and it was the San Marcos parks closing during COVID that caused that problem. But saying hands off of it is just letting it get worse and worse. I mean, just this past weekend, the amount of trash that was there was ridiculous and there were already citizens volunteering their time picking it up.
Where's this at?
This is at Skull Road.
Do you see glass?
Uh, yeah, glass, diapers, cans, I've found heroin needles at Skull Road.
Nails?
I've found needles, I find needles at, uh, Little Mash Drop all the time in Saudi, all the jurisdiction. Um, seventy-nine bridge, I've seen a lot of drunk paraphernalia there. The eyes actually started a bill, a adopted bridge program during COVID where we had volunteers sign up to clean weekly and the variation of trash, I mean, it's everything from tourist trash to locals dumping. And there is also a significant dumping problem from the locals in Martindale and along Highway eighty and six twenty-one. I think y'all need to hit it hard, I would love to see y'all hit it hard. I look forward to the day I don't need to pick up trash out of the river.
And see, like, for me, I've gone to Skull, there was boxes there with the address on it. So I picked up the boxes and I went and took it back to the address and put it in their front yard.
I find mail all the time, you know, and we've had issues. We've had issues with the, with Hays County and trying to get those pursued. Uh, no one wants to touch anything, no one wants to take responsibility for these bridges and for this waterway, uh, because they know if they're the first ones to do it, they're the ones that are going to be responsible for a minute. But it's going to look like River Road in New Braunfels, Texas here in the next ten years.
I, I won't have to defend our locals because, you know, we have citywide cleanups and I think it's not our locals.
Uh, household trash?
I think because we have, we have trash picked up.
The next time I find a Martindale address, I'll bring it to you, Mike.
Okay, I'm just saying, it could be ETJ, I'm just saying.
Well, yeah, people come in from other towns.
Yeah, I think a lot of it.
No, I mean, there is that, I'm not saying that doesn't happen. I have found Martindale addresses on mail in trash bags dumped at Skull Road. That was in twenty-twenty.
What was your name again?
Joshua Sicardi.
I will say that, um, you just can't arbitrarily open someone's cooler, you can't do that.
Culbode does it.
They don't do it.
I've seen it, bro, I saw it last year.
I worked there twenty-five years.
I saw it last year, man.
You can't open someone's cooler without, like, you said, fourth amendment.
You can ask them to open it and if they open it for you, now if they say they can't, well, most of them are so drunk and messed up on everything else that they will just open it for you and ask you if you want a beer. You know? But not only that, but I think it's an incredible way for the city to start making some money and that way y'all can be more competitive with San Marcos, because I think y'all do things a lot better than the San Marcos City Council.
Well, thank you very much for that. We're trying.
Obviously, I mean, I think y'all's shortcoming is the financial difference, but you go and give twenty, seventy-five dollar tickets a day, it adds up, you know, ninety days for the summer months, it adds up, you know? Y'all start charging for access, you know, obviously there's portaging rights at some of these bridges and stuff like that, y'all have to figure out, but, like I said, it's going to look like New Braunfels River Road in ten years unless things start happening.
And you know what, New Braunfels River Road didn't have a can ban.
It does.
Yeah, you're right, the can ban, I don't want to get into that too much, but that's the only thing that's been affected.
Well, you know, I love y'all's single-use container ban, I've pushed the city of San Marcos to adopt their own, even though they don't want to for multiple reasons. I just would love to see it enforced. I would love to see people getting tickets, I would love to see people getting pissed off and having to leave, because otherwise, there's just going to be more trash.
We got to do something.
We're planning a cleanup of the Martindale stretch and I can bring pictures to the next meeting, we'll easily get thirty to forty-five of the trash out of the river on the Martindale stretch, that's below the dam, you know? And so I really hope y'all take an aggressive approach to it. I hope y'all don't take the relaxed approach that some of these other jurisdictions are taking. The ball's kind of in y'all's court and y'all could really stand to make a difference with it. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
So, for three, three and a half years, I've been going down there more in the past, asking people where they're from. I mean, some come from almost Galveston, others come from almost Alto. Uh, lately, they came from, uh, Tampa, I mean, they come from San, San Antonio. Uh, you know, I'm just saying, people come a long way to go to this little Allen Bates Park. I asked the legislature, what, what would you be willing to pay? She said 15 or 20 dollars a car, you know? This is what they're charging in all kinds of parks around here to park and go to the river or whatever they have. I think if you say 20 dollars a vehicle for the day when they come out and they spend the day at the river, I don't think that's asking too much. I don't, I don't care whether it's, okay, you can say local or non-local. Most of the people I've talked to have not been local. Now, if you want to include the people that come from Houston, stay at Martindale, I go to the river. You wanna call them locals? They're not really locals. There aren't that many locals using a lot of these these parks and river access. And, and I don't know, I don't think everybody is just trying to trash the trash, but, uh.
Okay, I'm gonna speak, well, yeah, Charlie.
Sonja, I, I agree with what you were saying and the city council did a good thing doing the can ban and did a great thing on the new road. Oh, here, I love that.
Love that.
But it, it, it's time to start to implement the can ban. And Tommy, I had a question for you on this. So you're talking to people. I guess, uh, you're not giving tickets or anything yet.
We haven't.
Which wouldn't be fair. They don't, there's no sign in phase one. They don't know. But when you make these contacts of people, could you document that? And could you write it down? And then every month is the city council, a list of, I contacted 10 people this weekend, told them this, uh, had to give a warning for this, uh, found something that wasn't good and had to do a citation for cans or whatever. Maybe later, you're not doing citations now. But this is, I think this is all important to keep the can ban, uh, relevant. So somebody doesn't try to come in and confront their ordinance. You got this ordinance, you never use it. It's, well, uh, we have documentation for the, all this summer, we're doing this, this and this. But I think we need to do that.
Well, you know, what tells me something's going on in New Braunfels because they're starting to enforce and give them fines. So you know, the whole case, it went all the way to Texas Supreme Court. So maybe, you know, Tommy, there's something going on because they're starting to really put that, put hammer down on the ticket.
The precedent.
And, and again, go ahead.
Okay, you know. We have, we have incredible facility here in this beautiful river. We've got a lot of people wanting to come here.
Do you, do you think you could introduce yourself, please?
I'm Marcy Brode. Okay. Bitch, I, I, I recently visited Blue Hole. I don't know if you guys have ever been to Blue Hole.
Oh, yeah.
That is a, I'm just kidding.
A gate and everything.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they got millions of dollars. They planned, they got corporate funding and I'm going, why can't we do that here? Let's raise this to another level where we're not struggling because we only have one police officer on duty at, at a time. Because this could just distract you down there when we need you at, at other places. You can't be two places at once. I'm thinking about raising it to a higher level because we could see, we just opened it up and you can already see the excitement of people wanting to come here and see the beauty of this beautiful place. So if we made it a regional park where we had funding from the county, we have funding from the state, we have funding from multiple corporations. This could be amazing.
Yeah. Um, I'm, I'm just gonna speak bri- briefly about our first topic, park violations in phase one and I and the mayor and I have both discussed phase one, or at least the name of it. We would like to change the name perhaps to Veterans Park or something. And so we would like that to happen. I don't like the name Phase One. It sounds like you're gradually gonna get sicker and go to Phase Two or, or whatever, but I also own a small triangle of land in Phase One because my property is on the other side of 1979 that runs from Southeast River Road to where Spencer's Canoe is. I have a 15 acre piece of property that I've had in my family since 1961. So I go to the park and as Sonia has mentioned, I go to the park and Phase One almost every single day. I have been doing the garbage by myself and then now Tom Futch has taken it on, but I have been doing the garbage for almost two years now. And that's partially because we have a small maintenance budget for the city. It's currently about $19,000 a year. I'm trying to get it to be increased slightly to at least start to see that we need to start to have a regular maintenance program. Uh, but the violations that I have seen, and I showed the mayor this in Phase One or Veterans Park, there, there were 10 piles of charcoal briquettes on the ground. And so we first thought maybe they're cooking on the ground itself, but what they're doing is cooking in the grills, putting the charcoal out and then dumping it on the ground. I worked in the Presidio of San Francisco and the only campground in San, San Francisco for almost 20 years. We had small metal garbage cans with a lid on it that would say charcoal only. But if you look in the ordinances and I encourage all, all of you to look in the ordinances for San Marcos parks. In San Marcos parks, they allow no wood and no charcoal, but they allow propane. Now, I don't see a problem with propane, but if people, and I like people coming to our parks and I've spoken to them and I said, where are you from? Well, we're from Lockhart. And it would be an extended family, say, there. There could be, and as Sterling said, there could be 40 or 50 people in a group there at the park cooking and then bring in all their food and cooking all this stuff. And what they're also starting to do is put the canopies that you normally say might cover your car with in the river itself. Now, do we want to see these sitting in the river? And, and so we're, and the mayor and I also looked at all of the ordinances for, for the park and there is one that of course says no metal detectors, no nudity. I mean, this list, when you read this list and go through about 16 things, you almost get bored about half, halfway through. But, but we have been getting some bids. One bid we got was from a sign company on Hunter Road. And it's like 17 signs for less than a thousand dollars. We're, we're currently trying to get bids from two other sign companies. Uh, and, and so we're actively thinking about what these signs are gonna say. Uh, we do have a disposable can ban sign like the one that has just been put up on the road going down to the low water crossing by Marcy's house. We just put the sign on the fence of Martindale Water Supply. And so, because we had one down by the low water crossing and it, and it washed off. So I think um, the violations that I'm seeing the most of is loud music, a lot of garbage, but you can't do much about that. We just need to put out perhaps more garbage cans. I currently, I mean, I myself, when I was chairman of the Parks Advisory Committee, I went to Green Guys and bought the garbage containers, poured the slabs, bolted the garb, garbage cans down. Sean McDonald helped out a lot with that as well, and I want to throw a bone out for him. He has helped out a lot. But, um, uh, do you want to just talk briefly, then I've said enough about the violations? Do you want to say, is there anything about the sign? Yes, sir.
So some of those violations, you probably have to get them legal about because no firearms. The law has changed since this, this come into effect. You probably can't tell no one they can't have firearms.
Really? Can I say one?
Because you publicly, yeah, you got that.
Firearm like in here?
You have to have the 30 out six, 30 out seven signs posted.
Unless it's posted that you can have one.
So you have to have all of those.
You can have it.
We're gonna sign ourselves to death almost by putting all these signs out there. Legally, you gotta, you gotta say, hey, because we're an open carry state and everybody can carry, you gotta have the right. So some of those, those these ordinances need to be addressed because you can't just go in there and say, hey, you gotta fire them because then you're, you're trapping on someone's rights.
Do we have an ordinance to say?
And you have to have the signs of 30 out six and 30 out seven signs. And they have to all be posted, like I say, and they gotta be posted in English and Spanish and everything else. All the rules that go along with that. So now we're gonna sign ourselves.
You can gun, you just have to do it the correct way.
Correct. Yes, and, and the same with, same with the duty because there's, there's rules on all that.
I mean, legally, I can shoot my guns that I own at my house and I haven't done that in four years now because there's a parking procedure in my house. So if I'm not shooting my guns on my property by 26 acres, I would hope that nobody has guns across the way at the, what, two acres, four acres? How much is phase one?
Well, you can't shoot it. I thought, but it says no firearms. Let's not talk about shooting. Let's talk about it because that's.
Yeah.
So there's, there's a bunch of different.
Yeah, that's a gray area, you know?
Um, I have one more thing for the violation. Yeah, it's not, it's, this one is not ours, but since somebody opened the door to the park, the one that's down behind Marcy's house. There's a, there's a sign posted at the top of the road and then a sign posted on the bridge about the weight limits. And there are so many construction trucks that are pulling, like, I don't know, backhoes across. And my concern is that no one ever gets stopped. They could go out across, go crossing, but they don't because it's shorter. But my concern is that you're gonna knock that bridge down and probably when somebody totally innocent is driving that process. My grandmother, it's not gonna be because the, the stupid backhoe that gets tossed in the river. It's gonna be some person.
Are you talking the wooden bridge?
Yeah, yeah. I watch it because I'm on the corner there next to Randy and Jane. And I watch them all day long since they're building all the houses up back there.
Where do you think they're going to?
They're going to the new construction.
River Ranch. We're going to River Ranch.
She's going that way. She goes to their suburb.
It has something to do, Mary, um, um, Mary was telling me, Mary Paul was telling me the reason why. And it has something to do with the way that the gates are, um, are security.
You know, you know, might, might be a good suggestion. We could reach out to, uh, Barbara Hall.
Yeah, and just maybe while you're talking about signs, I mean, there might need to be a bigger one there.
There's already two.
Enforcement.
Yeah, we need enforcement, yeah.
Is there a particular time that they're coming here?
Well, during the workday.
Let's try and give you some heads up, you know?
I'll, I'll pass it on to the guys that are here today to watch for them.
Yeah, thank you.
One of the, one of the tough parts we have there is we don't have skills, so we have to wait there.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's a good point. But I mean, you can kind of tell.
You could just put no 18 wheelers.
Right.
And that, it doesn't matter about the weight.
No heavy construction equipment or something because, I mean, it's not necessarily, you can get, hold on, let me talk truck. You can get, I, I, I know nothing about trucks. You could get a Ford F 750, something. There's like these really giant pickup trucks that can haul the Caterpillar machinery and they do. And they're not marked because I've looked to see, okay, does it have like the name of the business or something?
So I have to look at the weight just so you'll know. And it may be rated to whatever a fire truck is. So you gotta think and, and the weight of our truck with, with the water. So that may be that weight. I don't know. For fact, I will find that out.
Yeah, thank you.
This is like my cousin Diddy. She didn't talk in the.
Because she knew. She actually did. I'm just trying.
I, I walk down that way and I'll tell you, I see the signs. I'm scared to drive. Right. I don't even drive down there. It just scares me. It is. So just the thought of watching those vehicles go there, we give me severe anxiety. Yes, it does give me anxiety. Totally off subject to this. What, what can we do? Can we make a phone call and make that notification?
So I'll, I'll answer that phone call. That's a, that's a perfect segue into what I need to talk to him about.
Okay.
If you call here to Martindale Police, we're not in here.
Okay.
Okay, so you need to call the sheriff's office and they dispatch us. We're not sitting here to answer the phones. So when I got your calls, it was the day after. It wasn't when it was happening. So it was doing really no good. I mean, I didn't do no good for you not to call. Don't, don't get me wrong there. But I'm not here to answer the phone calls. I'm not sitting in the office saying, hey, I got a call yesterday. I just happened to be in there. I came inside, someone called me, said, there's a reckless driver on 80. Like, why would you call me here at the office to tell me there's a reckless driver out on 80? You know, but so please call the sheriff's office. The number's on our website and they have been having problems with their phones. They're supposed to get them up. But even for us to, for you to call in, I just gotta be on the radio. So, so, because our phones are, uh.
Yeah, they're, they're main, the lines that are listed online, the only numbers that the sheriff's department call can answer the phone. Go say, we're no longer connected. And so you don't have, you call 411, the same number comes up and you can't get to the sheriff's.
And then I've called to the sheriff's department before and they told me to call to the Martindale office. And then I was like, um, is our, do we have an officer on duty? And they were like, we're not sure, but it ended up being, y'all, we're on duty, but.
I'm gonna work with our phones and try to get it really to our patrol car because I do have phones in your car. And so, uh, I'm, I'm just trying to forward these phones to Adrian. I'm saying, we want that something out there. I need support. So when you do call, I'll be calling.
Um, our city administrator is online and I'd like to know if he has any comments. Jared, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. I missed my video again. Um, yeah, I think discussion's a, a good one. Um. What the intent of city council is for tonight with, with what you want to achieve in terms of way forward. I know there's a a number of agenda items that we discussed, but, um, perhaps if we want to focus on each one of those and come up with a recommended, recommendation on, on what our next steps are, at least, I think that would be beneficial. Or if there's a solution that you want to be implemented, um, I think we can discuss those. I, I noticed that there's nothing for action tonight, but at least myself and city staff can, can take that on to, uh, bring the council as a future, you know, ordinance updates or, or what have you.
Okay.
Talking about the signs for years, time to get the signs. Before we, uh, leave the sign subject, uh, I didn't see anything about, uh, about prohibiting commercial activity. And I think that would be something good. I, I would imagine it's in the parks ordinance that.
I believe the bunker administration addressed that. There's no, they don't allow any commercial.
It's at the bottom of that sign?
It says no signs or advertising on advertising.
Oh, yeah. Commercial activity would be kayakers taking ten kayaks down and putting the river and taking it out somewhere else or.
That's an issue. That's an issue of people access at that point.
That's what?
That's an issue of people access. They're torturing rights in every state.
At the bridge, but not the park.
Right, no.
Talk about the park and, and to be fair, if we start picking on the tourists, we can't do that. We gotta be, there gotta be a rule.
Any commercial activity.
I think, I think that intent of that was just private, private outfits can do it, but a commercial outfit is, I think, I guess we could look into that because I know bunker did that. They had, but no commercial.
Even if it's a private outfit, if it's for profit, then it should not be.
Yeah, yeah.
To me, that's commercial.
Is there a recommendation? The, the sign should reflect the ordinance? So is there a recommendation on?
So no alcoholic beverage. No, no alcoholic beverage consumption or display, uh, is prohibited, right? So that one would stay. Uh, no smoking or e-cigarettes or, uh.
Let's look at that. Let's look at our mark.
Or devices.
Yeah, we need to look, look at our sign.
Because it even has no metal detectors. I, I don't know what, that's in our ordinance. So at one point in time, they must have had a problem with people digging up. Yeah, digging up and stuff like that. Because that is in our ordinance. So um, we have to change the chapter. So this sign has to be updated for the hours, 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM is in our ordinance. Um, motorized vehicles beyond this point, um, that, this is po- posted at the very front of Allen Bates Park.
We, we talked about maybe having it at seven in the morning or do you want to keep, keep it at eight?
We have to, at this point, we have to change the ordinance.
Okay, okay. So it's eight to nine.
The ordinance needs to be reviewed to start with, we see.
Yeah.
What you want to keep, what you dump, then put it on the side.
Yeah, that, that would be a good idea.
If you go to ordinance.
Yeah.
No commercial activity.
Or take an hour.
But the worst crap you put on here, people are gonna stop reading about a third of the way down and just walk. Doesn't matter because so numerous, if it's unsigned, it can be enforced.
He, he has his hand up.
Robert Devini in the comments said that there's no nudity ordinance, um, you know, stopping nudity at the parks. He said to check the ordinances above.
And can, is there any way we could put the ordinance up?
Thank you, Adrian.
Yeah, I mean, I looked at all of these things with Jeff when we went through it and I think we did say that we don't really need metal detectors. We don't need uh, gathering of wood, uh, no gathering of wood from park property. Uh, no glass containers that should possibly stay, but I think we could initially whittle this down to about eight main things and not have this huge thing. And even this sign needs to be replaced or cleaned or put lower down perhaps.
I like how San Marcos does say the alcoholic beverage consumption display, consumption slash display is prohibited. I like how they say that.
They got 16. San Marcos has 16 light items on that sign.
Yeah, and so, and ours does too. It's pretty long. If we had one that had all of this stuff on it like this, I'd eat park and then we could have some different signs that just say no fires, no alcohol.
Highlighting sign. I call highlight signs, you know, that pick up.
For the really.
Yes.
Serious ones. You know, with the, the ordinance about no disruptive noise. Well, some people playing their type of music, they think that is.
Oh, yeah.
Holding. But I think that's very subjective. I think that needs to be a little bit specified.
That's an order.
What that.
But if you're, you're, you're gonna have the same law, uh, ordinance for the park as you do for the citizens and this residents over here. I got a call this, today for a citizen filing a complaint on, on their neighbor.
Just strictly our parks. Strictly, you gotta keep it simple.
And those are public spaces.
Yeah, yeah. So what do you, I mean, I'd like to have. Yeah, yeah. So what do you, I mean, I'd like to have your input. What do you, I mean, do you think we get a little carried away with the long list? Is that, will that help you or hurt you?
It won't hurt. I mean, we just want to get out and tell them, this violation of law, this is what it is. I mean, I pull people over all the time for, along these, I didn't realize that was a law.
Jared, you got any input on that?
I think it's it's city council, it's at the policy. I I'm here to advise them, specific matters. If we get to an issue of, you know, naming the post, all park rules on one, on one, um, sign, the font is probably going to be fairly small, but I think you can address the, you know, as highlight to those special issues like no dumping and, you know, disposable container bans and others through additional signage. Uh, but you're probably not going to fix everything with one.
I agree.
What may, what may help me help you is maybe we touch on each of these park regulations.
Yes.
And then if there's something we haven't touched, we'll capture it, and I'll I'll just kind of jot down recommended changes for now, so if that sounds good, we can start with hours of operation and work our way down the list.
Okay.
So it's, um, it's closed from nine PM to eight PM. Or you would in the reverse, open from eight to nine.
I mean, I would, I'm kind of, I'm kind of.
We have to change the ordinance if we want, that's what he's talking about.
You have to change the ordinance anyhow for some of the stuff.
Right, we're not going to, we're not going to vote on this ordinance tonight, but I'll just capture your, in a, in a chat, in a, in a comment on that.
Yeah, Jared, just do notes.
Yep.
You could say dusk to dawn, which is going to change with the.
Seven AM to nine.
Nine PM.
Nine PM, daylight savings, it's three hours after dark.
Yeah.
That's not good.
Well.
I'd rather keep it at nine.
Fishers, well, for right now, if we wanted to get something going right now, we have to go eight to nine. But if we want to change it to seven, it it takes a little bit of time to change the ordinance.
Right.
Um, because we have to wait for a regular city council meeting. So.
I will say this also, at this point, where the basketball courts are, you do have people out there playing basketball late at night. And they're not causing a problem. They're just out there playing basketball and.
Well, there's, there's city lights right there, too. You can kind of see them. They're not trying to put flashlights in everybody's houses, scaring people's lives.
Right, but we're not such a rule in place.
Right.
So should we make a rule for each park, a little, 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 something because we have basketball?
It's too hard. It's too confusing if you have different.
So I mean, I kind of agree with you. If we got young people playing, doing athletics out there, I mean, we shouldn't.
Well, if you look at hunting regulations, it's thirty minutes before dawn and thirty minutes after sunset.
We could discuss that.
So if people hunt, they understand that.
Uh, do you, do you want to pursue the listing more?
Yeah, um, then no motorizing. Yes, Jared.
So are we leaving it the same?
Oh.
No, I think we need to shorten it by half.
I think he's talking about the ordinance. That is about the hours. Are we changing the hours or not? Yeah.
Yeah, I think everybody agrees they'd rather have seven AM than eight.
I'd rather have dusk to dawn. Thirty minutes, four, thirty minutes, I don't know if you on this, but I don't really care. Is that right? I'm an ETJ.
What do you think, Tommy?
I'm I'm hearing a lot of cross talk, so let's, let's, let's go through each council member. Mike McClab, what, what are the hours of operation for you?
I think I'd go with seven to nine.
All right.
It's fine.
Sam?
Seven to nine seems, seems fine to me.
Sonia?
Same.
All right. All right, seven to nine. All right, we'll make the change. Um, all right. Uh. This talks about use of the park facilities for private events. Talks about.
The his font, Jared?
Yeah.
Can you zoom in on your word document?
Yeah.
There you go. Okay, thank you.
That helps.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, maybe we can put this one off to next, but for where make updates to the ordinance. This is kind of a reserving spaces for special events or what have you. It talks about setting fees.
Um, adds confusion be- because of its ambiguity, like, people could be having a family barbecue down there, and it looks like it's a private event. So, I mean, like, what's going to dictate on what's, what's a public, a private purpose? You know what I mean?
I make a suggestion, special use permit, how about that? Do you want to, if you want to pry, if you want to pry.
Intent is for exclusive use of a feature facility. I think what that's the intent here doesn't say that.
What do you think?
That's something we want to, we want to consider if renting out exclusive use of certain areas of a park.
Or facility. When we, yeah, that's when we can talk about trying to generate rev revenue. I think, I think we need to focus on the sign now.
Yeah.
That's, that's something that is the third agenda, agenda item. I mean, if we could just get the sign down first.
All right, well, can we go, can we go to the sign, let's go to the sign first.
That's, that's what I'm.
The, the, the sign is based off of ordinance that no longer exists.
Okay, okay, Jared, yeah, let's, let's, let's go through the ordinance then.
All right, now we're destructive con- conduct and what is unlawful for a person to do. Intentionally knowingly interfere, disrupt, or prevent the orderly conduct, any program being conducted by the city in any park. Comments, concerns?
That's fine, but it doesn't need to be on the sign.
Yes.
On that, Tommy.
Good talk.
I mean, what we purchase, like someone had a, for the city function, and someone's ever trying to shut it down? I mean, we got.
Yes.
Some of these, there's other laws that would take place, like disorderly conduct or something like that that would.
Right.
There's other laws that would be violating probably.
Yeah.
And the same with that B.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
There was, there would be other laws that would obtain, and I don't think you need a, I mean, because we're not going to write them a class C ticket if they're, if they're really endangering someone's life.
You would just arrest them or something, right?
So for C, that's the unreasonable noise one. So what did we want to do with that? Did, did you want to change it?
No music.
Was that from a council member?
Yeah, I think, yes, Sonia said no amplified music, yes.
Yeah, do we need to specify? I think, I think, I think dumb amplified music. Yeah, I agree.
Amplified is a good word.
Not me.
Sound good to you?
Good.
I can hear it. You can hear it. I mean, they can have ear, they can have their pieces in or whatever.
But but the second part of that, at a volume which emits sound beyond the person's immediate sight. I mean, some, some people have their Apple phones or whatever, and they have a little speaker that that they plug into and and, I mean.
That's amplified.
But it, but if it's something that's at a lower, lower volume, as it states there, which doesn't emit beyond the person's immediate.
That's so hard to.
That is so hard, especially.
I think, I think we need to keep it, I think we need to keep it simple.
Okay.
No amplified, just like. Exactly, exactly. If you want to hear your music, you put your earphone.
Yeah, black and white, black and white.
Whoever is there says it's amplified.
Gotcha. Make it easy for you.
Six thirty in the morning, you're not allowed to be here. It needs to be really, really clear.
Right.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
We're like, we're in agreement. Do we need to?
We're good, let's move on.
Move on.
Change it to no amplified music instead of no unreasonable noise then.
Right.
Yeah, okay, look at the full comment. We'll, we'll just update, but at least I'll, I'll get the note on what needs to be done. Uh, take, remove, destroy, deface, tamper, disturb any artifact or cultural feature, or take, remove, or disturb any rock, soil, gem, mineral, fossil, or other geological deposit.
I would keep that, but it doesn't need to be on a sign.
I don't know if it does, because we've watched people walk, have our plants, like giant plants, and walk down the street. And they're like, we're just propagating.
People come up on my, on my riverbank and pull up big rocks and take them out into the river. Yeah.
Nobody needs to take the plants and to their own house or whatever.
I had no idea.
I didn't think this thing was picking up, right? Good point.
Well, Jeff, Jeff and I both have seen at Al- Al- Allen Bates Park where people are picking up rocks from the riverbed, and then they create like a little dam in the river in order to hold the water back and create a pond in order to have a deeper area in which to swim in, and I felt like that could have been detrimental towards during the safari race, where you've got these pe- people moving rocks. Uh, and, and so I agree with that, and I have also seen people dig up those elephant ear plants and and take them home and and.
Get rid of them.
Stay out of the search.
Oh, there you go. He said, he said.
Moving invasive species from one waterway to any other or to any other private property is a safe crime.
I mean, if it's water hyacinth, that's fine. I mean. Well, okay.
I would say just leave, leave the.
Leave it the way it is.
I agree.
All right, metal detector.
Why, why, why was that?
People didn't dig holes.
Oh.
I was going to say me too.
Yeah. I just wanted to know.
We'll give it time, it'll happen.
I don't know.
Doesn't have to be on the sign.
Yeah, that doesn't have to be on the sign, Jared.
Not on the sign. Does it need to be in the ordinance, though?
Well, if it's.
I think that's what Jared's asking.
If it's there, we might as well keep it, but I don't think we need it on, on the sign.
What's best for you?
And are we going to?
But if someone lost their wedding ring, I'm sure they're going to block their phone anyway.
Right.
And say, I can care less what you say, I got.
Right.
But I think like if you saw somebody like actively digging holes and then you could say, well, we have this.
I think you go back to another one, saying, you're digging holes, disturbing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, D would cover it. You don't need E.
Yeah.
I'm agreeing with that.
Try, yes, try.
Oh, and F, I guess, is so same thing, so.
Same sort of thing.
Yeah.
This one talks about.
Into D.
Wood, like foliage.
Yeah, yeah.
So we want to leave that in the ordinance.
I think condense, use D to cover D, E, and F. Then you can streamline, and it's not so.
That's good.
I do.
You don't charge us.
Provo now.
Hey, yeah.
This is, uh, refusing to leave the park after being ordered to by a police officer, received personnel, and returning to the, or returned to the park when that person was ordered to leave.
Come on, which one was that?
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think that's. Yeah, that's already a law.
But if someone's dumb enough to get ordered to leave the park, and then are they going to be smart enough to know that they can't come back? I don't know.
It doesn't start, it's, it's covered. Yeah, ignorance and then, yeah.
Which is, I don't know if they're legal.
So I don't think you need to.
Well, it's, it's okay in the ordinance, but you don't need it on the sign. It's not hurting you, hurting the ordinance at all.
Yeah.
I mean, if someone violates it, then you could say, hey, this is the or- ordinance, our police chief has come and told you to leave, and then you.
When their lawyer comes in to confront you, saying, here's the ordinance.
No, I don't think you need.
Just make it simple and then.
If you're ordered to leave and then you're returning, it's covered already. It's already a law. It doesn't need, Martindale's saying it's a law or it's not a law, it doesn't matter, because it's already a law.
I like that you stop and do that.
Sound good to you?
Yeah, it's already a law.
We have, we have attorneys, we have a police chief. I, I would go with a recommendation.
It's just.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just duplication.
Okay, I agree with that, yeah.
Care and custody of minor children. Um, unlawful for parent guardian or person custody of child eight years old or younger to allow that child to enter any city park unless child is accompanied by a person eighteen years.
Why eight years? Is there something specific about eight? Why, why do we cut it in eight? Why not ten?
Or twelve? Or eighteen?
Um, and would it be, um, like unaccompanied minor?
Yeah.
If there's a reason, why would we pick the number eight?
Eight years or don't.
I think, I think that's important. I think un- un.
Unaccompanied.
Parents should use that. That's exactly right. I'm just wondering if.
I, that's what I'm saying. I don't know why there's an arbitrary number. You can say eight, ten, twelve.
What would you recommend, Paul G?
I would say under ten.
You know, my sons, when they were twenty-one, no. So I'm not sure.
It's not a good number.
Well, not if you just have that at the playground. Right, if you're just not on swings or whatever.
Maybe you cut it off at teen, maybe say twelve, and that way you've got to be a teenager to be.
We're flexible.
I think, uh, though, like the sign, the way I read it, it's just like a child, like if they had an older brother, that's like, you know, a teenager, eighteen, can actually have their kid, sister, or brother there at the park. It doesn't have to actually be a parent, but.
Right, that's.
I mean, if. By himself at fourteen?
That's what I'm looking at right now.
I think you can be by yourself at fourteen in your house, but why can't you go to a park? I mean, how many fifteen-year-olds going to want to walk down the park with their little brother? When I was a kid, yeah, like when we were ten or twelve, we didn't want to go to a park.
Right, right.
You know, and that. It goes like there's a lady, and everyone would see, all the old people, we'd say, yeah, I don't want her. So right over the slide.
Yeah. Yeah.
And everyone fly up.
Tommy, what do you think, Tommy?
It's just, I mean.
But how can a, how can a, uh, minor be at home, like at home unaccompanied? What is the age?
Yeah, it depends on if something happens or that is beyond their level of maturity.
Well, what, what we were seeing at Allen Bates Park was that two children would walk their dogs there, unaccompanied by their adults, and they had two dogs. This happened recently. They would walk these two dogs without their parents, and these dogs were accused of killing cats, of attacking dogs, and many, many violations. And so I think that it is good that, whether we say eight or ten or whatever, but it's saying that children cannot come down to the park, whether they come by themselves, or whether they walk their dogs, or, or whatever, but I don't think it's.
I would say twelve. I like.
Twelve.
That's all legally responsible.
I like.
It's going to be arbitrary no matter what, but I think by the time you're thirteen or fourteen, I would.
Yeah, feel a little bit better. Yeah, because then that, that kid can go play basketball by himself, and there's not a problem with that. But a kid that's like nine might jump off the slide easily. Do dumb things, dumb things like that.
I drank a bottle of Old Prove when I was thirteen. Doctor, Doctor Roy, you're, you're a neurologist.
It's so variable, because maturity occurs at different ages.
Yeah, we can't, we can't write, we can't write something like that, though. It's either we're going to have to have an age.
You got twelve? What do you have, elbow for what, twelve? Twelve?
Twelve.
Mary says twelve.
You're saying, you're saying like, what is, what are you saying twelve for?
What, for what they're saying, is that for the, the. Uh, for what they're saying, is that for the, the, yeah.
Yeah.
So twelve years old or younger? To allow the child to.
I've had a child that I can't do that. We can't do this, Jen. Yeah, I've got, I've got two.
They've gotta make a little more flex. Sixteen.
But in order for us to put it on the sign without having to change the ordinance would be quicker to just keep it at eight or change it now at, at twelve, but see, it's gonna take us longer. We're gonna have to have another meeting, we're gonna have to talk about.
Why can't it just say minor children must be accompanied by guardian?
Because that goes all the way to eighteen. That's anyone up to eighteen can't go there.
And then what if they wanna go play basketball?
So two, uh, eight-year-old can't take his twelve-year-old friend down. But not a guardian, not a guardian, but a friend.
I mean, I'm just thinking like, what it, I, I see the reason why, like as a city you wanna be proactive. God forbid it's a female, male, sexual predator, sexual offender. Kids are down there by themselves, bathing suits. I mean, you know, I'm just saying it could happen anywhere. It could happen here, it could happen there, it could have, you know.
They're gonna make me a night nurse tonight.
We just wanna make sure that if they're kids and they are anywhere from the age one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, from one through twelve, that they need to have an adult there with them.
Yes.
Okay.
One through twelve.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I, I've been thinking about Allen Bates Park this whole time, thinking about the issue of the eight-year-old. But if they were coming down Phase One Park, if there were an eight-year-old by itself at that park, and there's that drop off there, it's like seven feet, you know, swift water, I don't even wanna think about it.
Right.
So that, that should be.
I know, this is giving, yeah.
You know, there should be some sort of reasonable, you know, background.
Yeah.
The, the next section is referring to, uh, operating motor vehicles, RVs, altering vehicles, motorcycles in the park except within parking areas or operational air, operation areas, which I guess is referring to roads or roadways. Which doesn't apply essential personnel. Any comments on that one?
Uh, I just, I took one picture yesterday afternoon from my, my, my yard. I'll, I'll pass it to the city council members. That's way past those limestone blocks.
They went past the butter sticks.
Right there, and they were down on the gravel.
Oh, my goodness.
Which is illegal, that's by Texas state law.
I agree, you're right. It's right. It's against the law. Two thousand dollar fine.
That was just yesterday. That's not, what's that? Were they in the river? Uh, the truck wasn't, okay. But it's been there before, right?
That's against the law.
Yeah, wherever they parked first, all the people were pulling down there before they put those real nice limestone blocks, which have been real effective, you know, the city.
There is a law, yeah, correct, there is a law.
Yeah, but.
Tom Collins did that.
Yeah.
Many years ago.
Exactly. But, uh, yeah, they, uh, they're trucks that are backed down too far. And once you're on the gravel bar, if you try and go too fast and you're just digging yourself a hole, then you're backed down in the water.
And actually, I've seen it parked in the river, it dawns. Park the whole truck, okay.
I would say leave it.
Yeah.
Yeah, leave it.
I think that's an important one myself.
Yeah. All right, next.
Next one.
So I previously took the note regarding alcohol to follow Sam Marcus's right regulation of alcohol within their parks. Incorporate that.
No beer in Allen Bates Park, that's what that said.
No alcohol, I'll say no alcohol.
No alcohol of any type.
No alcohol of any type. Alcohol beverages, whatever.
Well, that's violated every single thing.
Yeah.
Everything.
Yeah.
Even divorce.
So what are you saying?
No, I'm not opposing it. I'm just shocked that it's actually.
It's been.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying it's bad. I'm just saying I'm amazed that that's the law with this.
Yeah, I agree. It needs to stay. Alcohol needs, alcohol ban needs to stay.
Yeah, I like it.
Okay, all right.
Well, Tommy, like what sometimes you see is that people might keep their beers in their car, and then they have a refillable container and they go to their car and fill it up. I mean, even though they're consuming though, but they're making it sort of secret, but then, I mean.
The parking house in the park, right?
Yeah, the parking lot's gonna be in the park, so we're gonna say it's no alcohol in the park. Now, are we gonna differentiate between, is the river now? Are they standing in the river with that? Now, the river is technically what, state's property? Right. Public property, so the city doesn't have anything to do with the river. So it's getting to there.
I'd say alcohol ban, the parks vary.
Yeah, that's fine.
Anywhere in the park.
Yeah, but how, how much can you actually enforce that? If you see someone sitting there with a, with a, something like this or something that's insulated, are you gonna walk up to every single person and say, did you have a beer in there?
No.
Display of alcohol, no display of al- alcohol. And if people were smart, they would say, okay, I'm in. And the thing that I like about that is if they go back to their car and say refill their container, hopefully they'll take those cans and bottles with them and not leave them in the park. It would eliminate a lot of garbage. Because I remember when I was doing all the garbage and, and picking out some of the cans, I, I took over two hundred and fifty pounds of aluminum cans to green guys to be recycled, so it is a problem.
I didn't see it in here, but, uh, I like Sam Marcus's, uh, law and no styrofoam. I say.
So, yeah, so I think no alcohol, no glass, and no styrofoam.
I agree.
You just stuck those all in one.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Keep it simple.
Ninety-three-ten is just the glass. You're gonna add styrofoam to ninety-three-ten?
You got it, Jared?
Glasses are worse.
I missed something when we talked, started talking about styrofoam.
So, um, yeah, no, no alcohol, no glass, no styrofoam.
No alcohol, what?
No glass, no styrofoam.
Condense the two. One, the type of the container, container, condense it with the alcohol ban. So that you have one that reads no alcoholic beverages, no glass containers with styrofoam.
And can bans.
Oh, and or cans, yeah.
Can ban, and not, I say thing, non-disp- like plastic water bottle would not be allowed. It's got to be reusable.
Then we should say that.
That, that's totally on the rhythm.
Well.
We can make it in the parks, though, this is.
Uh, we, Tommy, can we make it in the park totally, or is that kind of, we're stretching it?
That's up to y'all.
But can, I mean legally, can we do that?
You got a bunch of kids playing in the park, and we're not gonna let them have water?
Well, they have it in a non-disposable container. It's fine.
They don't do that, though. They're gonna bring it in a plastic bottle that they get from.
Well, you know, what we did last time, we'll give away a bunch of free non-disposable containers. What we done before, we'll do it again for all locals. No problem.
That's a great thing to be selling when you start taking up, telling them they gotta go in the park and they have to pay. Because that's what they do with the run. I mean, that's the, the, the loophole up there. They're paying, my daughter's paying twelve dollars to go up there. And she made a mistake. She said, I'd rather go down here or go to school park, and she was a mistake. You know, you wanna make it the right way, go up there. Like you say, go up there and look at what Wimberly's done. It's not that big a stretch, guys. It's not that big a stretch. It's where you can start to afford to put bathrooms in.
That's right.
And that's the goal. The goal to me should be, there should be bathrooms at the park. I mean, we wish the park was one big park, maybe one day.
Yeah.
In my lifetime.
Maybe a regional park, there you go.
Yeah, the regional park from ninety-seven and all the way to Bath, they, they, obviously, that's the, the best thing. And then you put a bathroom in. You know, the bathroom would be paid for by the people coming to the park. That's simple. They're charging twelve dollars a head. It's sold out.
Yeah, but the locals don't pay. I would insist on that.
I agree. But I'm just using it as an example, you know.
Did we, we cover it all?
Briefly.
We got it.
I got you.
Comment.
Jan, go ahead.
It was, uh, Sam Marcus ordinance, section fifty-eight point zero three three. I can pull it up if you guys want.
Sure.
I copied it into the, into the, uh.
There it is.
Basically, no public display or consumption of alcohol beverages in parks unlawful for any person to publicly consume or display alcoholic beverages within a city park. Um, there's a defense for prosecution of, that the alcohol is consumed or displayed within a special event contract designated area, yada, yada. Also a defense that the alcohol was consumed or displayed while conducting water activities. Basically, within, within the river or waterway of city parks.
Phil? Yeah, we don't, the, the, that's a problem Sam Marcus has. And, uh, their problem is they don't, they ban alcohol in their parks, but they don't ban it from the river. And we, we.
Because you can't.
You can't.
You can't ban it from the river.
Well, you have a can ban. So that, that pertains to the can ban. I mean, we can't ban the alcohol, but we can ban a non-disposable container.
Yeah, can be glass.
So.
So I can incorporate that, that ordinance into the parks ordinance unless we want, or by reference or directly.
Tommy, put your input here.
I'm trying to write something, step down, uh.
I don't know if P- people would get confused about saying it is a defense to prosecute. If there's a better way to say that, or I don't know.
That's legal, Robert.
Yeah, I, I don't, I have an issue with Sam Marcus anyway. I mean, they, they allow, they have, what they do in Sam Marcus is they have avenues where they allow people to bring their cans of beer on the river.
That was the next paragraph.
Yeah, we don't want that in there.
Okay.
Take that out. I don't want it in there. I don't.
It's right there.
Take it out. My personal thing.
Other thoughts, Sam?
What is it?
No. The, in the Sam Marcus version of, of their alcohol regulation, it describes that their parks department may be, may establish entry and exit points along the river where display of alcohol may be permitted. And open containers or consumption of alcohol are yet not permitted in these areas. So basically, provides a way for someone to walk their cooler down to the river or carry their, you know, their case of beer if it's not in a public, in a non-disposable container.
I know. Hold on for a bit, I speak.
Yeah.
Sam?
Yes.
New Braunfels is, would be a better guideline than Sam Marcus, because they have a can ban. And I, I don't, I guess we could look at, uh, New Braunfels's ordinance, but they don't. That's strictly a Sam Marcus deal about the avenues of bringing cans of beer.
Well, and they've got a lot longer rivers than we.
And I think if we just open that up, it just opens up an avenue. It's just no beer. Like, if you wanna, if you wanna be respectful and have your container
Yes.
and not draw attention to yourself and be cool and sit down there and chill out with your family. But if you want, you know, there's, there's different ways, you know, to do it. Texas Parks and Wildlife, same signs, you know what I mean? So no display of alcoholic beverages, no alcohol, and that's it. No exit, no entry. It leaves too much confusion.
I totally agree with you, Sonja.
Yeah, so take that one paragraph out that allow, allows the exception.
Mm-hmm.
I agree with that, yes.
You agree with that, Jan? Is she on there?
You agree with that, Jan? I, I don't know if she's muted or not.
Uh, is there?
Sam Marcus, the Sam Marcus, uh, ordinance creates a, uh, a separate fine structure specifically for that regulatory item regarding alcohol. We want a separate fine structure regarding alcohol, or we just wanna go with the general penalty?
It's there, part F.
Because that's your can ban, right? Your beverage container.
Yeah. Though the Sam Marcus does not, does not have a can ban. So we really need, really needs to be more along with New Braunfels. I hadn't looked at their ordinances, but again, it's about, it's about the container.
Additionally, Joy Jungers mentioned in the chat that glass and styrofoam are prohibited in any state waters.
Got that.
Oh, in any state.
Yeah, so we need to add, we need, we need to go ahead and just, we need to put it on the sign. It's gonna be on the sign.
God, he's good.
I think, I think I'm agreeing with Sonja. We just keep it simple at this point.
Were, uh, were there other comments I saw from either a Devini or some, something? Are there some other ones?
There, there was some discussion, I mean, user one, that being whoever it is, says that if they can moderate the discussion, it's a little hard to hear. But, uh, since it's kind of, everybody's kind of jumping in.
Workshop.
Difficult to do that. Uh. I'm not sure Robert, Carol Devini, said the QR codes. Um, to put the QR codes on the marks and have our city ordinances
Connected to it.
to that link. Um, that, that's a suggestion. If you wanna, could take a moment and readdress some of the old comments on there.
Uh, I, I, I don't wanna stop the flow. I, I had just seen them pop up, so I think, I think we should move, move on.
We gotta keep up with it.
Okay, no good.
They can put comments, buddy.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, what's, where we at now?
The next section regarded the, uh, advisory board. We'll, uh, pass through that, go on to other specific provisions. The next one is fires, fireworks, firearms, and smoking. So the first one, that list, uh, unlawful for any person in city park to build or attempt to build a fire except in designated cooking grills either provided by the city or privately owned and brought to, to a city for use. The, the thing I would point out with this is um, it may be worthwhile to prohibit personal cooking grills that use, um, a charcoal base.
Wow.
Yes.
Um, gas grills might, you can churn off. But what's happening, I think, with these charcoal briquettes being left behind is people are bringing their own, you know, little round levers or what have you, and, uh, are disposing of their coals when they leave on the ground.
Say, yeah.
Awesome discussion.
What would gas fuel, uh, if you didn't, or, uh?
Mike?
Those are four.
I know, I didn't leave the room.
Okay, well, I have a question. Do we wanna install any grills, barbecue grills in Phase One? Does anybody want that?
They're washed away by the first blood.
Yeah, well, the mayor and I had spoke about that, but we do have three grills at Allen Bates Park. Uh, I do like the fact that, that people should only cook in the grills that are provided by the city.
Yeah, I think that too.
Uh, and then, but then Jared, what, what do you think? Because someone asked me specifically in Phase One about if they could bring a propane grill, and I didn't know what to say, so do we think propane is fine? It's cleaner.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be allowable, given under, under the current ordinances. And, and, under the current ordinances, they can bring, you know, a charcoal-based grill, but they can't scatter their, um, matches or other flammable material.
They are.
Art.
But that, I think we need to ban it.
Yeah, it takes two seconds.
I think we need to ban it.
Obviously doing it.
I went, uh, over there, uh, to Phase One, and there was still, uh, coal smoldering on the ground under the bridge. It looked like somebody was living there.
I've been living at the house there, and I've seen fires in the middle of the night, and I've seen kids with lighter fluid spraying it on the fires. Making, when you're doing a burn ban, while I'm sitting there at my house that's made mostly of wood. You know, and that's when I called the sheriff's department over there, and they called the Marvell Fire Department, and they came to the volunteer party. And they came in the middle of the night, it's two in the morning, and they had their lights on, they, there were three different fires. They came and put the fire extinguisher out on three of them. And that wasn't even charcoal. That was just people making the fires in the middle of the night. So, so there's no rules.
The fundamental question is whether you wanna limit them to the grills that are provided by the city, or if you wanna allow them to bring a grill. And the grill that I've, I, I, seems to me would be most likely to permit would be a propane prison grill, because they'll bring it in, they'll cook, and they'll haul all the propane and stuff back out.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's cleaner.
But you could stop it at, don't bring any personal grills in, only use the ones provided by the city.
Sam, Sam Ar.
It seems to me that's the two choices.
Sam Ar. Sam Marcus Park rules, it says propane grills only, no charcoal or wood grills.
I agree.
Put that same verbiage in there.
I like it.
Yeah.
Good, good.
But in Phase One, where can they use them?
Let me bring a propane one in.
They can bring a propane grill and cook wherever they want.
Wherever they want.
Yeah, because they're not disposing, uh, briquettes on, on the ground.
Or wood. Yeah, like three months ago, someone put a, a charcoal one in Allen Bates, right in the river. It was there, broke one of the legs, they slept it.
Yeah, I, I, I cleaned it up, yeah.
Remember that, yeah, because I remember you guys from, yeah.
Yeah.
I went down to rock the dog, and it was there for two days.
Alright, so then if they. So what, what you said is they, wait, read the San Marcus one again.
Reading.
Now what?
Pretty simple.
Propane grills only, no charcoal or wood grills.
Yeah, and no gathering wood for fires. Yeah, no campfire or whatever.
But see, like right there, it says one grill per fixed picnic table. We don't have picnic tables at phase one.
Well, we may.
We could, we could leave that off, yeah. We don't have to say that.
Yeah.
One grill per party.
I, I think it would be good to get picnic tables. I, I hate the idea that they be carrying them all over the park.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll chain them down.
I think if it's like that at the picnic tables, then that would be appropriate.
Can we put something that says no, no um, firewood, no. Fire, no whatever.
We could have a stand and they could put their, they could bring their, have a picnic table, have a little stand for their propane grill.
Sam, what, what day was it when I got up there? Was it Saturday or Sunday late and there was a fire still burning right upon me?
Yeah, we can't allow charcoal.
You discovered that and you put it out.
And then I think like. I think it was the weekend. Once we do, if that's something that we could do, then people can reserve those. Yeah, they can start reserving them here in the office. We could reserve the tables.
Now that would be an income thing too, I mean like.
Just like to start to get your feed.
You should set it up where people could sign up online. They rent the Airbnb or whatever.
Okay, we need, we need, we address that?
Adrian.
So we're reading the.
Adrian has that comment.
Someone on Zoom says, why invite fire at all? Encourage people to buy in town or bring their own food.
That's what we're doing next name, I mean, only gra- gas grills, right?
So we're uh, we're focusing then on the San Marcus side, right? But I, I think you should have to go to the ordinances to see how it is really written. And that's just an abbreviated.
I agree.
Part of their ordinance.
Well, in, in the ordinance, it says no wood or charcoal.
I'm just saying that the, the proper word is probably better in the ordinance than on this short little sign.
Mike, if you ever have a sign, do you want me to refer to the provided? Let me know and I'll put it on the screen.
Yeah, you might as well go through all of them. Let's just kinda, let's go through, there's several of them. I'm sorry, Jared, just I stepped on him again. Sorry, Jared, you're, if they're, you're the city manager, I'm, excuse me. You're running this show, go ahead.
I, I'm, I'm here to help y'all. I'm, I'm here to help you.
Okay, go, go.
We wanted to, I, you know, I can copy and paste what, what's on the San Marcus regarding. Their, their ordinance. It, it's kinda lengthy, but it talks about propane tanks, not nexus of certain size. On pain propane grill, grill per area. Issuing special permits for events and other things. It all seems. Pre-induct, pre-resply, here we go. Let me see if I can get this to look. Alright, here we go. Use barbecue grills, pits or other cooking appliances. It's unlawful in San Marcus. To use any type of like electric cooking appliance except the facilities provided by. Their director of the parks. Uh, use of any charcoal or wood cooking appliance grill, pit smokers or apparatus. Any type of cooker, fryer, or other oil-based appliance for cooking or heating food. Have any, have or use any type of open flame other than for the purpose of lighting a propane grill. Uh, have you or use a propane grill at any location other than a provided fixed picnic table? Use any type of grill, cooking device within five feet of a combustible object. Having a propane tank in excess of twenty pounds. Uh, one propane grill or portable propane cook stove is permitted at each picnic table. And then it talks about uh, special events and be able to. Uh, have deviations from that for laundry.
Yeah, well, we can't really enforce that in phase one though until we have picnic tables there. I mean, to say that they can only have a propane grill on a picnic table. Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, so they couldn't have it right now.
There you go.
Until we get.
But, but there are freestanding portable propane grills that are safe. So it doesn't have to be on a picnic table.
Yeah, I know Joy had some real nice one.
I had one too, just like that.
But, but there are freestanding outdoor uh, propane.
Right now, just to try and get order in the park. I think it'd be better just to say they have to have it on a picnic table.
We don't have to.
But, so they can't have it until.
Well, or we could say they can have propane and no wood or charcoal until we get picnic tables and then we could say.
We're doing an ordinance and like, we just need to, we're gonna have picnic tables. We're just, this is for the future.
Well, we can always change the or- ordinance. We're changing it now. We don't have picnic tables. I like the idea of saying no wood or charcoal. But you can have propane.
But there's no ordinance that says people can't bring their own picnic table.
They could bring their own table, that's true. There isn't or- ordinance in the San Marcus though. There, there is one about that.
Have been peaceful. They wanna go to the river. They wanna put their little tent up. They wanna barbecue. The kids play in the river, nobody's in fights. They get along, they have music on, it's download. They've talked to these people for three or four years and they're not looking to cause problems.
I see, you're, you're correct in that. Yes, you are.
Okay, so.
So we just. I think a lot of this is non-enforceable unless you're gonna go in there and round everybody up and.
No, it's not, that didn't work.
No, this is propane versus wood.
The point is, do we allow portable? Propane grills.
What they just said. Propane only.
Just keep it general.
What are we gonna do then? Take the grills out of uh, Allen Bates Park or is that a ci- city designated spot?
That's, that is a designated cooking grill.
Yeah, it says, except, except in designated cooking grills that are provided. We have three of them there. If they wanna do charcoal, go to the park. Just in those three grills.
But I do like the idea that you said earlier about making the um, metal trash can. I've always seen those used as well, that like you can, that is for only the charcoal briquettes.
Yes.
Rather than just leading them to their own devices.
Because what I'm seeing at Al- Allen Bates Park and the grill there, if they wanna cook and there's spent briquettes in there, what they're doing is just cleaning them out. And dumping them on the ground at the base of the grill. So maybe we should look into buying a small. Metal garbage can that says charcoal.
We're doing an ordinance, so do we? We only allow on those three grills.
Yes, yes.
Right.
Yes.
Flexible on that.
The grills are there.
I'm good with that.
Okay, okay, on.
Are you good with the idea that Sam was proposing about the. Designated.
Yeah, three, just at those three spots. But if you wanna write, write in there. Oh, I see there, or other implantable. If you wanna write in there propane, are, are you gonna put that in, 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 in there now on, on A?
About, the discussion was. Discarding used charcoal.
Well, but we didn't say anything in A about allowing propane.
Uh, yes, we, I, I, I captured the notes above.
Okay.
Alright then.
Moving on to animals. Well, we got fireworks and firearms or behind.
Tommy mentioned that since it's an open carry state, we can't really.
Yeah, we may not be able to do the firearms.
The firearms, for sure.
Discharge of firearms is unlawful.
Yeah, there you go.
I think I'd leave it for now.
Leave it for now.
You got firearms down the river, people are gonna drink whatever you wanna.
We leave it like it is.
Animals. Uh, unlawful for a person exercising ownership, care, custody or control of any animal. To allow that animal to run at large in a city park, all pets must be unleashed.
Can't you just say all pets must be on a leash? Do you need the rest of that?
Well, it does say, but you do have to have something about they need to pick up their.
That's B, oh, okay. We're just talking about that whole like. Any person exercising ownership, care, custody, control, like you don't. Do you need to say that? Why don't you just say all pets must be on a leash?
I agree. Agree with that.
Unlawful to allow that animal to soil city park grounds without immediately picking up and properly disposing.
Good enough, looks good.
We may have to buy some plastic bags though. I mean, we have them displayed out here in the music air, air, area, so. If we bought some doggy disposable bags, which I have done, and put them in Allen Bates Park. I personally bought some and installed them there.
Oh, if you had a whole lot like, I don't know, uh, the San Marcus Animal Shelter, the Kyle one, Paws or Laws and Lalee. They'll give you those, the little stands and you can.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you can just put them up.
Okay, thank you.
I, I can't collect my dog's urine. Okay. You know, that soiling.
Allow their dog to soil.
Alright.
Adrian, Robert Devini on chat say. If you don't take out your own briquettes, it's littering and also asking about cats.
On a leash. Yeah, I'd like to take my cats swimming all the time.
Oh, so Robert Devini in chat says. Having them, people on the barbecue, uh, leaving their briquettes is littering. And also another comment about the leash, I assume is what about cats?
Yeah. It says pets, all pets must be on a leash. All pets must be on a leash. If it's a pet, it has to be on a leash.
It says all pets must be on a leash.
If it's a monkey, if it's a tiger, if it's a whatever, it's gotta be on a leash.
Okay, so we.
Basically no.
That's good.
Yeah, I like that. That's good.
Bicycles may not be ridden in any park except in, where authorized by signs.
I think take that off. Um, I mean like, well, because like bicycles, I like to ride my bike. And I don't want to leave my bike all the way up here by the bank because. If I'm riding to the river, I just respectfully take it with me. I don't ride it, I walk it with me. I park it there on the bank. I get in the river and then I get back out because.
You're walking and it's fine.
We do have a bicycle rack at Allen Bates Park and I have never seen a bicycle walk to that. That bike rack, but it's there. We have a bike rack.
So I get, guess leave that, Jared.
Good. Swimming, is that your own risk?
Yeah, that's good.
Hunting, fishing and camping unlawful to hunt, harm, harass, disturb, trap, confine, catch, possess or remove. Wildlife.
Amen.
Good.
So that says that there's no fishing in the parks, right?
No, I guess the next one.
Release any fish.
Oh, you can't add fish. But C says fish, gravel or catch or release in an area where fishing is prohibited by sign. So you can't, so it doesn't, so it's only saying you can't do that where it's prohibited by sign, so otherwise you can do it.
Yeah.
So A is, doesn't, needs to.
It doesn't say anything about.
Fish is wildlife.
Yeah.
Wildlife other than fish. Wildlife other than fish, yeah.
You all happy with that?
And put that cat on a leash.
I have.
My daughter actually walks her cat on the leash.
Really?
She does. Davy Jones is on a leash.
Alright, y'all wanna put that in there, other than fish?
And so we all went.
Did you hear that, Jared?
Yeah, I captured it. Unlawful to collect or gather wood. Unlawful to use any water or drinking fountain, pool, sprinkler, reservoir, lake, river or other body of water in the park. For the purpose of washing or cleaning pets themselves, their clothing or their personal belongings.
Sounds good.
I guess it's God's day.
That's the cape it.
Deposit wastewater sewage or effluent from sinks, toilets or other plumbing fixtures upon the grounds. Alright, on now to signs and advertising. It's unlawful for any, for a person within any city park to announce, advertise or call the public's attention in any way to an article or service. For sale or hire.
It just says no advertising in the park, right?
Mm-hmm, right.
Good.
Next one is talking about political activities. Soliciting voters, et cetera. And paste glutac or otherwise post signs, placards, advertisements. Or inscriptions whatsoever. Nor erect or cause to be erected a sign whatsoever on the parkland.
Yeah.
Okay, cape it, that's good, next.
Uh, commercialization activities, it's unlawful for a person to sell or offer or sell any goods, wear, services or merchandise of any kind. Except by authority of an approved concession contract or permit properly issued by a city and approved by city council.
Sounds good.
Now, does that, so part of, one of my comments was no commercial or business activities allowed. That doesn't really say, that means you can't really go there and sell something, but you could go drop off ten kayaks. From the business. And there's no rule against that. So I think I'd like to have something else in there about.
Yeah, that's services.
Services or merchandise of any kind.
Yeah.
Alright, so that would be a tubey docked, right? Are we covered there?
Okay.
But if you added deliver to go offer, offer or deliver. Cause your point is they could have offered the service online, never, and they wouldn't be violating that. They'd be delivering the service.
They just wouldn't drop you off.
So, so if we added deliver to offer, then you would, this is covering your.
I like it.
What about using uh, parks as uh. Entry and exit for commercial businesses?
I like that.
Now, hurry up and write it down before I forget what I said.
What did you say?
Yes, and uh. Yes.
That's not good, sorry. I thought it was, it was an extra question brought up about you had to leave a max test. There's access at the bridge.
Yes.
The portage is, portage, portage laws.
That's on the.
There's a bridge right there.
And that's like, that's like private-public use, right? But if it's like, yeah.
Any public road. That's why. Can people sleep under bridges technically?
I, I swear there was one living under that bridge.
There's the one in San Marcos. Either side, there's a lot of, you know, they don't clear people out there anymore.
Well, we haven't gotten to that, but on our sign, it said no camping.
There you go.
We haven't gotten, is that in the ordinance, uh, Jared? The no camping?
So, um, it mentions no camping here in this, in the, uh, that's a good, good catch. Mentions no camping here, but doesn't say camping in a, anywhere else.
You can't be in the park.
Yeah, right.
We need to spell it out.
It needs to say that because we said that after, what was it, nine, you have to leave the park.
Mm-hmm.
So therefore no, no overnight camping.
No overnight camping.
You could put that by the hours, I guess. Close, the park closes at nine P M. No overnight camping, or no one is allowed to access the park after that time or something. Or it closes at nine, get out.
You don't have to go home.
But when it says, uh, honey, fish, and camping, like someone could put a tent, and they can camp during the hours.
Yeah, sure.
Not overnight.
Yes.
Yes, yes, to get outside or whatever.
There are tents in phase one during the day. I have seen them there, but it's just during the day. It's just a place to go in and lie down. Hey, take your kid in there or whatever.
Park closes at nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, they were agreeing.
Now, now that the park's closing at night, I mean, there've been people camping over there a whole bunch, but.
But now.
And when you say, hey, you can't camp over there, they're like, I've been camping over here for twenty years.
That's why we're having a workshop. That's the first thing.
Sorry, things are changing. So the stored or abandoned property, you just mean like giant things, not things that people like just forget or leave by accident or.
Yeah, they're talking about vehicles there.
Yeah. Like you just can't keep your boat tied up.
Or mattresses.
Yeah.
Elevations.
Yeah.
Cause right now, the only violation mentioned is removed, may be removed or stored, but it seems to me the first thing that's gonna happen to them.
Yeah, they need to get a fine.
Citation.
Yeah.
Right? They will be cited.
It needs to be removed. You will get, um, a citation or a fine.
And you may be, and it may be moved and stored.
Yeah.
But you will be cited.
Yeah.
Ninety point thirty says hunting, fishing, and camping is the title of ninety point thirty.
Yeah, we just.
And then, and they didn't just, we don't actually say under any of those.
Right.
That's where you wanna put it, right? You're gonna put it up there?
We weren't gonna put it because you could.
Nope.
That no park closes at nine.
Well, he, Jared was gonna put no, oh, overnight camping in, in that, in that.
Yeah, that's right.
Jared, real quick, you're, you're gonna do a draft. You're gonna send it to us to, to review and add points, correct?
Yep.
Okay, and we can send that to the, uh, Riveri, River Advisory and the Park Advisory Board for review.
Yeah, we can, we, if, if city council wants, we can have them review it, provide their concurrence before the city council considers it.
Okay. So send it to you guys.
Workshop. Like, send out everybody to workshop.
Well, I mean, uh, yeah, yeah, that's right. Everybody could send their email, that's right. Yeah, send it to us. I totally agree. Go back. Yeah, is that okay, Jared? The citizens, can they put comments in?
Comments?
I guess.
I mean, it's just commenting.
And this is government.
Yeah.
Okay, y'all gonna put comments in?
I mean, I think we're getting a lot of good com- comments now, and I appreciate us sitting here and doing that.
See, so now we're on to the miscellaneous, right?
So.
Yeah.
So, yeah, did Jared capture your commercial business activity entrance and?
Jared, you took that, you took that note?
Yeah.
Down, 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 down. Other way, other way. No, it was quite a waste.
Here we go. Uh, no entry nor exit of the river through city park as part of a commercial enterprise. I'll play with that.
Yeah.
And then, right there from under miscellaneous to ninety, the ninety-three point thirty-four for the miscellaneous. I would like, like I said earlier, I would like for phase one to be shut down for a week or two. And let's block it off and just say, due to the amount of trash, we are doing a, uh, cleanup. And that way it lets people think about it.
Yes.
For at least two weeks, and then we reopen once we have our signs up.
Well, they're all gonna come over here to Bates Park.
Let them go right there where the sign is.
The rule already is.
Yes.
I think it should be shut down until there's more control.
Are we shutting it down for everybody?
I, shutting it down for everybody.
Yeah.
For right now.
Just to make it clean.
Yes. It needs to, the, the barricades need to be up. There needs to be like tape across. And a sign that says, due to the amount of litter that's been accumulated, it's shut down for the public, uh, you know, just to kind of.
Temporarily.
Yes. I've seen glass down there. I've seen human feces. I've seen open, uh, charcoal briquettes that have still been lit. Glass by the river, cans everywhere, trash overflowing, uh, it, it, right there where it says, the mayor or city council may, in order to protect the public's health, safety, or welfare, or preserve city park resources, impose temporary restrictions. I want there to be a restriction imposed with a sign that says why.
You just sit there and think about what you've done. That's right. I agree.
More human clothes through the Fourth of July holiday.
That's right.
Through the Fourth of July, uh. Huh?
It's certainly after the Fourth of July. People are just gonna.
Yeah, I think.
No, we have, we have time right now.
Okay.
From the twentieth, right now, until.
We reopen.
The end of the month.
Okay, we'll open for.
Yes.
If the problems are resolved, then we can open it.
Now, I'll, now I'll give my good news. So that's like the little, so the next thing is, uh, I'm working on a grant right now for twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, uh, I was able to get the grant, um, for the park earlier. Um, now, since I'm off for a month from work, I'm going to sit down and, um, hopefully I'll be able to use some of the monies, uh, if we do get awarded towards the park, and I would like to, like for it to go to phase one. So if anybody wants to, has ideas or has a way to, I mean, I was thinking of an ADA, uh, swing or, you know, or something.
Trash cans.
Yes, I mean, we can. I just need some ideas. I filled out the first grant. I could do the second grant. The next thing is, I think before we start calling it Veterans Park, that we need to at least open it up to the public for them to give us their ideas, and we as a council, or as, you know, a mayor, I know that, you know, that we want to do that. I do like Veterans Park because I do have family members that are serving. I have a daughter that's currently, uh, you know, in the Coast Guard right now. So I mean, I get it, but I think that we need to open it up to everybody and have their inputs on what they believe the park should be named before we just say what we want it to be named.
That sounds fair.
Yeah, we, when I was speaking with the mayor and we were trying to get the, uh, porta potty delivered, they said, well, what is this park called? And then we just, on the spur of the moment, said Veterans Park. Also, I did receive a comment from the public that that might be a nice name, so it's not a per- permanent thing, as Sonia had said. We mostly just said that to get the porta potty delivered to a specific place. Yes.
I, um, really, uh, appreciate getting public comment about what the name should be. I think that's a fantastic idea. Um, I don't know this right now. It's up in the air, but, um, I did already contact the P A to find out if we can get money from them to do a Veterans Park.
Mm-hmm.
Good for you.
I looked at the census to see how many veterans we have in Martin Luther. So, um, hopefully, cause they have a whole athletic, um, athletics and exercise division.
Mm-hmm.
That we, then I told them, you know, the problem, part of the problem is they can't fish, they can't canoe, they can't hike, they can't do anything. Nothing is accessible, and none of our parks are, and that's what our entire town is looking around, is the river. So I'm hoping that they'll donate engineering.
That'll be good.
Plans for how you would make it accessible, um, but I don't know. And it's fine if we go a whole different direction, cause it's not like they told me, I love that. You know what? Let me write you a check. Um, but I just wanted to be like transparent that I.
Yeah.
But I did, I wanted to just see.
Good.
Have that, is it possible, what would, you know, what, what are your guidelines?
Good.
Are you, are you only park advisory?
I'm not on anything.
You fired?
I don't know. Okay, so I guess do we need to, for shutting the parks down, do we need that, does that need to be done in the city council meeting?
Yes, it does.
But well.
Or the mayor, the mayor can do it.
Yeah.
She doesn't need it to be by accident of city council.
I'm sorry, Jared. What were you saying?
I was saying exactly what y'all were saying. Um. Yeah, the mayor can do it on her own, or if the city council wants to take that as an action, it'd have to be part of a future agenda. Um, at this point, if you want it to happen quickly, you'd have to set up a special city council meeting later in the week.
But the mayor can just by her own action, she could just do it herself without the city council.
Yes.
I would like to consult with Tommy, though, about talking about the enforcement of this. How is it gonna be enforced? People cut caution tape and go around barricades and do whatever they want all the time, so.
We, we can figure that out.
We can consult with Tommy, and, and we have Sterling, uh, close by, too.
I mean, if we've heard.
Talk outlines of bodies running and taking caution tape.
We can put a sign that says, uh, bacteria.
Yeah.
Bless eating.
Whole park is hot.
Okay, we are digressing.
Okay.
Are we at the end of the list? I've got.
The, the penalty, the penalty thing.
The penalties.
Yeah, the ordinance is if you noticed when he was going through the ordinance, at the end of different things, it said penalty.
Right, but there's a section, there's a section at the bottom that we had just gotten to that said, yeah, ninety-three point ninety-nine penalty.
It's all the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, all of them are the same penalty. I just wanted to see what it was.
And, and we are limited to what we can do in a flood.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Okay, a person found guilty of violating provisions.
There you go.
It's a class five, yeah.
And I think if we have one of the, if one of the police cars, if it starts, park it over there at the entrance. Put the sign on there that says, um.
If it's got good tires.
Yes. Yeah.
What happens after a while, though, people realize there's nobody in? And then they start carrying.
So.
I have a question. What if there's someone that is, is just a real problem down there, repeat offender? Do we have the right, or do we want to ban them for a time?
Well, they, they'll be arrested. I mean, you know, they can be arrested and.
You do it in San Marcos?
Yeah, and that's what Tom, uh, Chief Boyd was saying, is that there's other laws besides just these ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay.
That can be. Like the trespassing.
Okay, so we don't really have to address that.
Yeah, yeah, disorderly conduct.
Alright, I think we've, we've now accomplished item one of the discussion, which is discussing the park violations.
We're never going home.
Well, we sort of did two, too. We've, we've sort of gone through two by saying what we've been talking about in, in one, um.
Yeah. It's, it's, in addition to the parks rules and sign, is there other signage that needs to be included in the park?
I thought we were saying a couple of little signs for like the super important things like no fires or, don't.
Don't go outdoors.
Well, it's.
Can I?
Yeah.
Make a comment of two things that.
Thank you, Jeff.
Be good in the ordinance.
Yeah.
One is no generators. There you go. And, so I think people are gonna take them down there and run their generator. We'll be hearing across, across the river. Generators, yeah. And can we say something about no canopies on the river?
No what? Canopies. Oh, right. We can't regulate in the river.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's state-owned property. We don't, we don't get a say to it.
It's in the water. Yeah. Technically, on the state.
And most of the.
There's a, there's a chance we could try to, we can look at regulating canopies in the river from a flood damage prevention perspective.
Alright.
If they're over a certain size, but.
There you go.
Even, but if they're not, if they're.
Yeah, there's probably a state law that covers it already.
So sign it. You can have a sign that cites state law.
Yeah.
Prohibits canopies.
Right. State law prohibits blah, blah, blah.
Yes, Marcy, I have a, a question about our, our liability as a city if someone is harmed and, and is, and the lawyers could address this, please.
No, we don't, no.
We, we don't go there. We don't.
No, I'm just saying, that's not that, that would be a house. It's like, what about, what do you think about that?
Do we warn people that there's snakes?
I mean, people should know there's snakes.
Well, you would think so, but I'm just.
Do you warn people the river doesn't go in a circle?
Well, that's a good point, because an alligator did eat a two-year-old in, uh, Disney World. So, I mean, it's a good point, but I would think anybody going through the river would be aware of snakes. Do you think that that would have to be?
I don't.
Warning, they don't have, because whenever I'm in the river, I have seen snakes, but they usually go away fast, like a cat.
Water moccasins.
Are your, are your, you're in Texas, right?
Are there any other miscellaneous items that we want to add to our prohibited items or activities list?
Uh, Charlie Olds mentioned no generators.
He, he has that at the top.
Oh, you've got that?
Yeah.
Can't be tents, signs, um.
First snakes.
Snakes.
Anything else?
I think, uh, a sign on what you can bring. What is allowed. Like a small one, um, I know that, that's always helpful, like, you know, reusable containers, drinks in containers. Um, you know, whatever that we are trying to promote.
Non-styrofoam.
Yes.
Lawn chair.
Yes. So I.
Sunscreen.
Uh-huh. I think, you know, like, um, things, things that, that is allowed.
I think that's excellent.
Have a fun, safe time.
So long.
Uh-huh.
And I think it's good to have a list of what is allowed.
And have a fun, safe time. I mean, let's have something fun about it, you know?
And then while we are, we were on the, um, on the discussion about trash cans, like if our trash could be labeled for, uh, landfill and recycle. Like, if, do we wanna promote? Do we really wanna be good stewards? And we need to make sure that our trash is labeled for landfill and, uh, recyclable.
Yes, those are, those are the seventeen signs that I had created two years ago. I have signs that I was gonna put on the trash can about recycling and gar- garbage. We, we have started those, those signs.
Two years ago?
Well, it was shot down, but I did. I didn't, I wasn't.
Oh, I was gonna say, on, on the item for trash, um, to given it's the amount of trash that Ty picked up over the weekend. It exceeded almost ten cubic yards of trash is what he, he picked up. So in order to get a trash can that size, it's the, the, the largest commercial front-loading trash can that our, uh, all waste provider provides, is a size that we would need to accommodate all the trash that was generated.
I'm afraid of that.
And then they'll just be dumping and putting.
The other option is, do we provide, like, we have doggy bag, you know, posts, a trash can pad, and we have signs regarding, um, leave no trace type of approach.
Yeah.
Yep, yes.
Well, Jared, what, what about this sign? Can, can you put that up about the, the,
Cage.
The cage that says, place back trash here? Do, do you think you could pull that up there, please?
Pull it. Can you put that?
Uh, yeah, I'll see, I, I was just thinking like, uh, like a doggy bag post.
Yeah.
But larger for trash bags.
Well, I, I agree with that, but I think if we leave the dumpster down in phase one, people are just gonna fill it up with household garbage.
Why can't we put a sign that says, must take out your own trash?
That's another one too, I agree. This is other, that's what Sam Marcus has, right there.
So I, I was thinking, what if we remove the trash cans completely?
Oh, I like that, yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is good.
Yeah.
Jared, Jared can't see this, so Jared, do you want me to share this?
Sorry, Jared.
Uh, yeah, I'll stop sharing on my side, and you start sharing on yours.
So you know what counts?
It's what Sam Marcus uses in our parks.
I like it.
They have a, this is like a basket where people can place their trash bags. It's like four T-posts with hogware.
Yeah, and can we also have the, um, leave no trace signs?
Yeah.
Well, that's two, that's two very different concepts.
Mm-hmm.
That's leaving a trace if they leave it there.
I just meant leaving it all over instead of just here. So, uh, you're right, though, absolutely.
But this, this would be a way.
Or leave only a little tiny trace.
Well, it would be easier to clean it up if it's in that cage, as opposed to having garbage cans.
Household trash, how, are we concerned about people just dumping?
Bag trash in that receptacle is not gonna be protected from vermin.
Well, we would clean that out.
Every day?
But we would clean it out at the end, end of the day. It would save someone to have to go there twice a day to empty the garbage cans. If, if that caged spot is full of garbage, it, it saves it blowing all out overflowing garbage cans.
Are, are, are we, are we hiring a, a park attendant to, to do that every day?
Yeah, who's you guys? So far, we do have someone picking up garbage six times.
Not every day.
Who was it? Yeah, I was at Allen Bates this morning, the gentleman was picking it up.
Yeah.
I actually helped him a little bit. He basically said, once, stop putting that twenty gallon, you know, just put a fifty-five gallon barrel, you know, container in there. You go to the green eye for sixteen bucks.
He said that would, because people are bringing it. I went down to the, while he was cleaning up the top, I went down to the river with the dog,
and it was two cans and a sock. That's all that was down there.
Mm-hmm, it was clean.
It was clean. I brought up the two cans and the sock.
Kept it in it and, you know, up the, you know, not a lot, I didn't, one thing I don't know. Can I, can I suggest it like?
But he said, get, get the fifty-five gallons, and he put the big trash bag in it, and people are bringing it to it.
Hmm.
The twenty gallons not holding up, it's not big enough.
Get, get back to this design, say, say we said, for, 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 uh, pick, for, for park, trash only, or something like that, no household garbage, subject to fine, or something like that, what do you think?
Yeah, but when it's right down, only down at the river, they're not gonna, no one's gonna walk that far with their trash.
But then also, well, it doesn't hurt though. And then, um, would we also then have the bags, like the doggy bag thing that you were talking about, that like have?
That would be good, that would be a good little doggie stand, you know?
Hey, trash bags at the mudnet station?
Yeah, like where, if they didn't bring one to their door, then they don't have an excuse. They can grab a trash bag, put it in, and dump it in that bin.
That's a good question. About shutting the park down.
Oh, um, the suggestion was to shut the park down for a week or two?
Just phase one.
Just phase one, yeah.
About the park?
Yeah, and we were wondering exactly how to do that.
Just barricade it off, and park closed.
Just put, put one of our clunkers out there?
I just, I just move them.
Okay. No problem, they can put, maybe use our old vehicles as a blockade, or what do you think?
Do we have any barricades?
Yeah, we have just barricades.
Okay, good.
So, I mean, we're, we're speaking about maybe doing it from whenever we decide to do it, but not through the Fourth of July, at least saying that would give us time to talk about the signs and maybe put up some signs.
Deep cleaning.
And then when we open it up, it's, it's pretty clean.
Yeah, it's pretty clean.
It's, it's pretty, pretty clean. Um, the only thing that I noticed recently is that people are digging into the riverbank and creating steps down to the river. This is a whole new thing that I saw. So, so that's something that I noticed today when I was there, but that's getting away from the enforcement or you being able to facilitate us closing the park down through prior to Fourth of July.
And T-posts will probably be the best, uh, to try to close it down, because someone's gonna move a barricade. You put some T-posts in, that would probably be the best, the signage across it, park closed.
Mm-hmm.
And will, would we say park closed until a certain date, or just say?
Just put park closed.
Okay.
Oh, but, but by the way, there was, somebody had a photograph of somebody in a four-world drive truck that went, went across our buttersticks and parked right next to the river on the gravel park.
That's, I've been mentioning.
I saw that, but you can come in from the riverside right now, there's really no buttersticks, there's a yellow.
And they just go, they go around?
Yeah, you go around it all day long.
They put some T-post up?
If you put a bunch of T-post up.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll put T, T-posts up on my little triangle there, where the purple concrete posts are. I'll run some T, T-posts, uh, uh, across there.
I've got some, I think I have some old T-posts, I've got some. I'll have to show, show you where, where my line is.
We'll figure.
We'll figure it out.
So Jared, I think that was really good, going through the ordinances, and, and we have more of an idea about what to do for signs. Um, so I think one large sign and a couple, few smaller signs, and to update the signs at Allen Bates Park.
Yes.
Do we need signs at Gardena, Gardena?
Not right now, I don't, I don't think so. It's not officially, until we decide what to do in the master plan for that, for that park, it's not, it's not a problem now. And I think with Angela on the park committee and living next door, she can bring any concern she has to our, our attention. And Sean is, is across the street too, so.
Yeah, from Gardena. And so we kind of touched on creating revenue for the parks, but I think that that's, uh, if we just get started with the signs and the ordinance, for now, we may have to just table the idea about how to create revenue.
Well, one.
Once we get all that going, it seems like it would be pretty easy to then, for like the second phase of what this workshop kind of thing to do, is then get back together and go, okay, we've got all of the foundation is set, we're, we're about all of that. So now we're, we, because like then the admission fee makes sense, you know? And then actually following through on finding people for violations, that makes sense, so.
Yes.
I mean, I think you can do it better once you get your rules solved.
And I mean, who knows, maybe whenever we do open phase one up, we'll get an attendant to collect fees as they're going in. We have still time to talk about that, uh, you know, then, but I think we have enough with the signs, and then we can come back to the revenue. Yeah.
Um, let me, let me just say something really quick about the revenue though, as it pertains in our ordinance, because in the ordinance, it says that if you're in Allen Bates Park and you wanna have a public function, or, or a private function there, excuse me, between the parking lot and the playground, that you can do a private function there, and the price is to be determined by the city council. So we have yet to determine a rate of charging, what we're gonna charge. Like if someone wants to have a bouncy house and they wanna use the electricity. I think in the special use permit, it's like twenty-five dollars and then fifteen dollars more if they use electricity. And then again, I, uh, not again, but I wanna thank Lee Rust and his work with Blue Bonnet Electric Co-op in replacing the lights in Allen Bates Park and replacing all the GFI plugs in Allen Bates Park. So if any of you go by there, please notice the, the sign, uh, the lights that Blue Bonnet installed in the park for free for the city.
Hey, Sam, but like, for the rates and stuff, is that something that the parks committee can discuss and maybe come up with prices? And then bring it to the, to the city council?
May, mention that to Susan then. Okay.
You have to leave it.
Thank you.
I'm gonna leave it. I love my better idea.
I, I, I think we were, we're getting close to our closing.
Been over two hours. Jared, do you have any last comments?
Um, other than to say we're getting into budget season, so if we're going to consider possibly for next summer, or for may, maybe even the remainder of this summer, but if we're, if we're gonna look at having, um, a park attendant and having that be paid for by a revenue generating activity within the parks, or, or what have you, we need to have further discussion on that, probably soon, depending on how quick the council wants to move on that. Hire somebody or put a contract in place, that's, that's gonna take.
More discussion.
Can I, can I add something to it? Maybe we could have volunteers. Is that, can we do that legally?
I think it would be better.
Take up trash and carry it away. There's nothing stopping them.
Not me, Forrest, having a tenant taking.
I think we need a bona fide, uh, reliable, honest person to collect the money. We don't want volunteers doing that.
Hey, uh, Jared.
Okay, I'm out.
I wanted to, I just add, I know that we've talked about, uh, phase one and Allen Bates. I think like what we really need to do with Skull is start holding that landowner accountable for what's going on on his property, and, uh, that we as a city need to have a discussion with them. And, um, just, like I said, start holding him accountable for what's going on on his property, as far as the trash, the littering, and, uh, stuff that's going on on that stretch right there.
You're, you're right about that, because I have spoken to Tommy about that, and people are crossing private property in order to get to the river, and he cannot enforce that unless the people that own the private property at Skull Bridge, I mean, even that parking lot there is private property, and not many people know that. That is not city property. That's private property.
So there are some laws in the Health and Safety, hey, Health and Tech Code, the nuisance abatement and so forth. If you can look into those, maybe get legal to say, hey, you know what, we've responded, we've had, I hate to say it, but we had homicides there, right? We've had, we've had all kinds, we've had fights, we've had a lot of stuff there. And that takes a lot of time, so you can look at nuisance abatement type ordinance and say, hey, we're gonna start find the landowner for this, if you don't.
And maybe just send them a letter, because, um, I, I cannot see, I can understand if you do no parking on the roadway, but I can't see us enforcing, uh, like our park signs and everything on private property, but we do need to, as a city, um, send that landowner a letter.
Can I add a point?
Trash, trash is definitely considered part of the, uh, nuisance ordinances already, so if there's trash being accumulated there, not being taken care of, that's, that's something that we can cite. And, uh, I'd work with our building official, um, Lee Rust, and, uh, our police department to aid that remediation.
Okay, so is that something that, I mean, that with us talking about it, so that's gonna get them all rolling?
Yeah, I'll send an email to Lee.
Can I add a point? For both, all of y'all, since we do have a, a can ban in our city limits, could we enforce that can ban in that parking lot at Skulls? In the parking lot? I know we can. On the Guadalupe side, is there a way to, and say, they parked their car and they're in city limits?
Private property.
But it's our, it's our, it's our city limits, in our city limits.
Well, you can, you can have cans in your front yard though, Mike.
But I'm saying, that particular place, there's a can ban sign there, it's a parking place where people park their vehicles and walk down to the river.
I think we just need to.
That's always, that, that sign there, Mike, is only just tell them that, hey, you can't have it on the river.
Okay.
You can't.
So I guess, I guess my point is, another point we could bring up, you know that the bunker administration stripped annex the river up to Don's Fish Camp and made it the city limits, the river itself, not the Guadalupe side, but the river itself. That's something we could talk about, to butt about, I don't know.
I don't know if that's true, because I thought the river was state.
The river is.
Well, they did, they did, they did do a strip annex.
Show, show me that.
I think if we just start out with the letter first, and then we can go into all that further.
Others.
Okay.
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 It is, uh, eight fifty-seven, eight fifty-eight. I call this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.